Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing of the Goffstown Planning Board dated January 9th, 2014. I'd like to start off the meeting by welcoming everyone here, and thank you for coming tonight. Let's start off by going around the table and introducing ourselves, please.
Phil Davant, Selectman.
Brian Rose, Town Planning and Zoning Administrator.
I can't hear you, sir.
The acoustics in this room, just so everyone knows, are very bad. It's one of the reasons they don't... There's no live filming in here, so we'll do our best to speak loudly, but if you hear the air system on right now, it's going to be difficult to have the sound travel. That's just the way. Because there was some expectation that there might be a number of members of the public here, so we wanted to make sure everybody had seats. So perhaps you could move to the front row, and we will try to speak loudly, and we'll go from there, and so continue to let us know. But just so you know, people will have a hard time with sound travel. But I see some people here who are usually here for candidates tonight, but people have podiums and microphones. Maybe the sound travels better then. We'll try hard.
I'm Gail, a Recordings Secretary.
Brian Hanson.
Mark Warden.
Chris NATO.
Donna Pennard, alternate.
Barbara Griffin.
And I'm John Heikel. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. We're going to... Let's see, what do we have for...
Mr. Chairman, there's no minutes or anything.
There's no minutes. We're just going to discuss the strictly zoning tonight and the zoning changes. Perfect. Let's get started. We have... Tonight substituting for Richard Meany is Donna Pennard Cludier. She will be the alternate on the board this evening. We have a full attendance here of members, seven of us will be voting. The first one that I think we'll take up is the... And it seems like because it has the most interest here. We're going to take up the Mass Road corridor. We received a letter from the town planner discussing it, telling about the public hearing. I assume the public hearing was properly noticed?
Yes.
Okay. Could you tell us where it was properly noticed, or where it was noticed?
We put it in the Manchester Union Leader and in the Town Hall, and also in the library, and also online, and that met the statutory requirements for notice.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Okay. So let's...
Yeah, these aren't microphones with amplifiers or speakers, so we'll try to speak up. Yeah, these really go plug into the AV system for the Goffstown TV, but I don't think we have speakers in this room. So we'll try to project. Yep.
I mentioned that we put the notice in the paper for this hearing, and also that we put it on the boards at Town Hall and at the library, and also on our website, and that that met the requirements for public notice for this hearing. And we also did send letters to affected property owners for rezones.
Did you receive a letter?
Okay. Is your property supposed to be rezoned?
No.
Okay. We made our best attempt to send letters to property owners on Mass Road. Those were courtesy letters, and so, you know, I apologize if you didn't get one, but we tried to notify everyone that we knew about and could send it to, so.
Yes.
I wonder if you can tell me if there are rules to this meeting, and I'm going to have people speak.
Yes.
If they're representing county.
Yes. Yes.
So I don't know if I can speak at this meeting because I'm not a resident. But this provision of the audience, I guess I can.
Actually, the rules of the meeting are set by the chairman, Ms. Holden. Ms. Holden, you're our representative to the county commissioners, so the rules are set by the chairman.
Right.
That's why I'm answering.
Yes. And thank you for that question, and I was thinking that, you know, this is not a town meeting. This is a public hearing, and as far as I'm concerned, anyone is welcome to speak and offer their opinion to any issue that we're going to talk about tonight. You don't need to be a resident of Goffstown, as far as I'm concerned. If you have something to say, we'd like to hear it. This is for you folks. This is not for us.
And Mr. Chairman, for the sake of organization, how do you recommend people present their viewpoints? Should they raise their hand, or should they get up and be recognized?
Yes. We will be speaking. If you have something to say, please sit at one of the chairs. You can state your name. You can state where you're from, because that's not an issue, but please just state your name, because it is a part of the record.
Otherwise...
Point of order.
Yes, Phil?
I think it does matter where the people reside, because this is a public hearing for zoning changes for the town of Goffstown that will be on a ballot for the voters of Goffstown to vote on. So public comment that's made here should be recognized as to whether or not the comment is being made by a resident or a non-resident, because it's possible that you could have a property owner be a non-resident. So this is important information for the planning board members to hear this, and it's important for the residents of Goffstown to understand that the comments that are made at this meeting and how the members of this body vote accordingly, because we are their elected representatives.
Okay. I would go along with that, and I think that's a great idea. So please state your name and where you're from, and any other reason why you may feel for or against any of these issues. Yes. Well, this is what I'd like to do, and we're going to open up the public comment here, and then you'll have the opportunity to say what you'd like, rather than answering questions one-on-one. So if there is... So we're going to be discussing the petition warrant article affecting Mass Road zoning it commercial from Henry Bridge Road to the Manchester line on both sides of the road.
Mr. Chairman, point of order in regards to identification of what we're talking about, could you please identify it by amendment number as proposed? That is how legal notices went out, and that is how anybody who is listening to the conversation either here or through GTV or by minutes is going to know what amendment we're talking about.
Yes, I will do that. And the amendment number, petition...
Fourteen.
Fourteen zero three one one dash zero zero two. That's the petition code. "We, the undersigned registered voters, do hereby request this petition to be placed as a warrant for the 2014 town meeting. Shall the town amend the zoning ordinance to change the zoning of all parcels at a BUT, Mass Road, to commercial zone. This change shall be applied to all properties from the Manchester border to the Mass Road-Henry Bridge intersection on both sides of Mass Road." And that's the wording of the petition.
Just a little question.
Yes, Phil.
Mr. Chairman, these are petition articles. Are we going to ask to have it presented or discussed by the lead petitioner?
We could. The lead petitioner could certainly open up if they'd like. I would... Generally, that's the normal practice, but I guess we're all going to have the opportunity to speak, so I don't know if there needs to be that order. I would say the lead petitioner on this one, the name is Gaytan Benner of 12 Joffrey Street in Goffstown. If...
Question?
Yes, Barbara.
Just whether the chairman knows or anybody else, because my memory sort of is lacking on this point, because I remember when there was one Henry Bridge Road intersection at Mass Road, and then land with the county was exchanged, and there was a set of lights put up, and then the Irving Station went in. So there is that intersection that is referred to and named De Nickerson's Corner. And then there is the old Henry Bridge Road, what I think of as Henry Bridge Road, that used to come out and still does come out further west on the road, and perhaps the Selectmen can refresh my memory. Do those roads have different roads, or are they all... Both Henry Bridge now?
The one further west? It's Greer Road.
Okay. I just want to...
No, Greer Road is a different road from Henry Bridge.
I'm talking about the old paper road.
The original Henry Bridge Road, because that was relocated into what is now Nickerson's Corner.
Right. And the old paper road, does that still exist? Do you know?
It's not used.
That doesn't mean we have lots of paper roads that aren't used. Maybe David... With the chair's permission, if David Pierce, who's familiar with this from probably his rail trail work, can address this, because before we address this, this warrant article was unusual in that it didn't have the actual lot numbers affected, which may be part of why some people got notices and some people didn't. So I just want to be clear as to if I've got something identified as that intersection, what it means. So that's what I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, if you have that answer.
Yes, thank you, I do.
Okay.
I'm David Pierce. I'm the Chair of the Goffstown Rail Trail Committee. The former Henry Bridge Road that you were referencing in last March ballot was reclassified as a trail. It's town-owned land, and it's not a...
It's not considered a road anymore? All right, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
So there is only one Henry Bridge and one fourteen intersection?
Okay. That's what I needed clarification on, because I didn't remember that.
Thank you. Great question. Any more questions from the board, or we'll get started? Okay. Yes, ma'am, if you would like to speak and ask questions, please come up front, state your name and the town you reside in. Absolutely.
My name's Jean Preble, and I'm at 505 Mass Road.
Could you spell your last name?
P. S. Peter, R. E. P. S. Boy, F. O. D.
Ms. Preble, would you mind bringing that microphone just closer, so we can make sure that...
Oh. Because I almost didn't hear you. Oh, boy, that's something for me.
You're going to be on TV.
Oh, great. Okay. Number one, I was wondering, who came up? I have four questions, maybe more. Who came up with this proposal? There had to be one person that came up with it specifically, not the whole board that yelled in at one time. And what precipitated this? What is the purpose of it? And three, does the board already have buyers? Because you've been trying to do this for some time now to turn it commercial. And what's going to happen to our taxes? That's number four. When it goes commercial, do our taxes go up? I have the biggest piece of property between, and you probably know that, Lynchville and Moose Club, and so I'm wondering what's going to happen to my taxes.
Okay. I can... I think I can answer this. First of all, this is not the board's petition. This is a resident of Goffstown's petition. They had signatures filled out. This was a properly submitted petition to the town. The signers of the petition or the petitioners signed the petition. They were all verified as Goffstown-registered voters. This is not... There are some warrant articles coming tonight that the board has recommended. These are not recommended by the board. These came from an individual or individuals.
Okay. On that, may I indicate that the letter that was sent to the people had only one person on Mass Road. There's only one Mass Road address here.
Can I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, just for point of clarification, I think she's talking about... Just so people understand what she's talking about, the letter that she's referring to is the petition.
Is this letter?
I think she...
This one.
When we sent the petition to the members of the public that were affected on Mass Road, we only copied the first page of the petition, just so that you would see what the language of the petition was. And I have the actual full petition here, if you would like to see the other signers of the petition.
How many were?
There were, I think, seventy-something.
No, her question, I think, it goes to the Mass Road. Who actually signed this that lives on Mass Road?
Oh, how many on Mass Road?
And her point was on page one, that there is only one signer who presented a Mass Road address. I think that would be Mr. Wynn, standing right here. And you would have to go to page eight of the signatures on this petition warrant article, and you wouldn't have gotten page eight, because of what he said. And there are two signers of it from the same address, 443 Mass Road. So those would be the two signatures from Mass Road on it. So there's the one you saw and one other address.
I know of two others, I think. I know of two others.
Page one, the Belco, Raymond Ward.
Yes. What is your name, ma'am?
Nancy Brown.
Nancy Brown. And then maybe someone else in the...
I couldn't read that.
I think...
I'm sorry, I apologize. I couldn't read that.
But again, this is a Goffstown petition. It's not required that anyone from Mass... It's not required, although it may be a good practice to have people in that area sign the petition. This is a statutory requirement, that you need these signatures to have this petition, and it doesn't require it to be from the area that's being zoned or rezoned.
Okay. So now we come to what precipitated it? Why does the town of Goffstown want this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can speak to this. This is a petition that was brought on by a resident or a group of residents. And when I spoke before, and I used the term "lead petitioner," that means the person who initiated the petition. And generally, we have... When we have a petition like this, an article for a ballot change, we have the lead petitioner presents the reasoning of why they're doing this. And that was my question of what precipitated me asking that question, because the very questions that you ask are the same questions that I ask when I see this. And the reason why I say that is, a while back, we had a petition that was brought forward to change many properties in Pennardville to commercial.
Correct.
And there were... Majority of those people that owned the property stated, just like you're stating, that you aren't in favor of this. You didn't sign this petition. You didn't create this petition, and you find out that your property is now in question to be zoned, have a zoning change. And obviously, you would like to know what initiated that.
Correct.
And that's why we generally have the lead petitioner come forward with the petition and say, "I generated this petition. I got these signatures, and this is the reason why."
And who is it?
I... May I say it? It's this... Gaytan?
Katie Benner.
Gayde Benner. And I would... Would you mind... Would you mind?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. Thank you. State your name and where you live, please.
My name is Gayde Benner, and I'm from 12 Joffrey Street in Pennardville. I just live off of Mass Road.
Ms. Speaker?
Can you speak up, please, or what can you...
Gayde Benner, on 12 Joffrey Street. I live off of Mass Road, okay? And the reason why I put this petition together is because I was opposed to Plan Pennardville. I'm not sure if you followed that. To me, Plan Pennardville was horrible, and it was something that I believe that the town planner and the Economic Development Board was trying to pass without us knowing, all right? And Plan Pennardville was supposed to be commercializing Mass Road. Everybody had to look the same. There was going to be only five feet apart from each building, okay? Everybody had to have little canopies, glass frontage, and it was a horrible plan. They were going to take our front yards away for sidewalks on the side streets, our backyards away for alleys, okay? This is an alternative, and this is why I'm not the only one that signed this. We were seventy. Seventy of us decided that we should try to put this through in lieu of a Plan Pennardville.
Excuse me.
And this way... There's another plan also that I'd like to tell you about. It's ready, set, go, okay? If everybody that's here, when you go home...
Excuse me. Katie, one second, please. Would you mind... And pardon us. Would you mind, please, addressing the board and introducing why you came through with this? And if you would also, please, speak up, because again, we...
Can you hear me a little bit better now?
And speak just to this particular subject, so we can see.
Okay. Well, it's all together, though. This is all together. And I'm trying to give it... This lady, you don't mind if I address her, because I'm not as nervous if I address one person, okay? Because I'm not articulate. I have difficulties speaking in front of public. So if I'm just addressing her, it would make me feel better, if that's okay. But I'm speaking to all of you, okay? And the reason why, again, is it's an alternative, all right? Because we need something to give on taxes. My taxes just went up several hundred dollars, and I think most of the people's taxes went up between $350 and even $1,000. And we're going to get into... Tonight's not the night to get into the budget, but that's a big thing, too, because people are being overpaid in our town. They're getting too many benefits, you know? But everybody has to help, okay? So maybe if we can get the town to lower the benefits a little bit, lower the people's pays, and then maybe if we get more commercial, that would help us.
Stay on point. Please, point of order, as to why you filled... And please, point of... I don't want to interrupt. I appreciate you saying this, but please stay on point as to why you would like to see this.
Well, taxes. We need our taxes to go down. We don't have that much commercial here, and the burden is all on residential. So if we can get more commercial properties in here and make our taxes go down... But as far as I understand, I had asked questions to the planning department. If you have a residential lot on Mass Road, and even if the zone is changed to commercial, your taxes should not go up, because you are not using it as commercial. That's what we were told. Before I put this forth, I had asked on this, and this is what I was told. If you don't use your property as commercial, your taxes should be based on residential. And it just makes people have a little bit more opportunities. So if you want to run a business out of your home, if you're commercial, you'd be allowed so. And it would prevent this flex zoning, which is really bad, okay? Commercial industrial flex causes, okay, pretty much a green light for them to build anything. It can build big apartment buildings, like the buildings that are going back of Shaw's, okay? Big, like 24 or 48 apartments, and if it's low income, it doesn't bring very much taxes. The workforce housing that we have right by Rite Aid, okay? We're lucky if we get $1,000 per unit. And if two children go in there, the cost of educating one child is over $11,000. So for $1,000 we're getting in taxes, we have to pay $22,000 plus to educate those children. So this is why, if commercial is zoned throughout Mass Road, it will help us on our taxes that we won't get this flex, okay? Which can allow big, massive apartment bills. And this is why myself and 69-plus other people put this through. But again, it's going to be up to the voters. We can only suggest, we can only ask for relief, but this will be for the voters to decide.
May I ask a question?
Please address the board.
Okay. So she didn't want what was going to happen in Pennardville, and I don't think anyone else wanted it, and she's on Joffrey. Therefore, her house will not go commercial. So she's just saying, let somebody else get the commercial, basically, is what she's saying. Is it not?
I don't know. You'll have to ask her. I...
Well...
Yeah.
I'd like to answer that. Right now...
You're right.
I'm residential, too, right now, but I have BUTs that are commercial. The house next to me is zoned commercial. It's not being used as commercial right now, but it is zoned commercial. I have but Mr. Paris's property, okay, which is commercial. And I do put up with a lot on my street, because I also have the car wash, okay? That's on the corner of my street, okay? And I'm a... You know, I try very hard, you know, to be a good neighbor. I don't say too much, but we need the business also, you know, in Goffstown.
So therefore, if she has done her research, she says that our taxes will not go up, provided we do not have a commercial entity on our property. Is that correct?
I think the answer to that... I think the answer to that is, you are taxed under your current use of whatever the use is of your property. If it is zoned commercial and you are living in it, there's no reason that they should go up, but I can tell you that they will go up, only because your taxes will go up no matter what. And so... But not because it's commercial.
Right.
Because of spending.
Okay. So... And therefore, I guess the board, since the board didn't initiate all this, then you don't have buyers already set up to buy our properties then?
No.
In other words, no one's coming into Goffstown and said, "Boy, we'd really like to set up something, because Goffstown needs us."
I wish.
No, no, no.
Not enough of your holdings, but there's already properties available.
Oh, I realize. I've been there. I hate to tell you, over 70 years, and I'm not going to tell you the remainder of those years. I'm older than all of you, and I've got the biggest piece of property, and I've been paying big taxes.
Right.
And I realize Goffstown does not have what it needs to continue... Look at this beautiful school we have, and it's wonderful that we can give this to the students, but we do need income. I agree. I do agree. But I just wanted to know what brought this all about.
Can I ask again which property you have? Because I didn't hear you when I was sitting back there.
505 Mass Road. I'm between Lynchville and Moose Club.
So you have a big property there.
I do have a big piece of property, yes. And I pay big taxes.
I can imagine. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I hope we answered your questions, and thank you. Next speaker, please? Yes, certainly.
Dana Benner, 12 Joffrey. Just want to clarify that the whole basis of this is, it goes back to that, the budget and the taxes thing. We don't have a tax base. You know, if you own a home, you're the one getting it. If you look at places like Hooksett, if you go down Hooksett Road, they have that corridor that's all businesses. So is it, what, Route 28 that goes right straight down through? And everything off of that is residential. They have... Their tax base for residential housing is lower than ours, because they have the... If it's not, then I stand corrected.
It's not, sir.
It's not? Okay.
No, sir.
But they do have more commercial drawing upon that, paying their share of the taxes. And that's what the whole idea of this Mass Road thing is, was that one corridor that was going through, because it has the availability of electric in the sewer and that type of thing. So it makes logical sense in keeping, you know, the rest of Goffstown agricultural and rural and what we all like about it, Goffstown, you know, leaving it. But we've got that, so we make it more appealing for businesses to come in. If they want to come in, if they don't... If you don't want to sell your property, then don't sell it, you know, for commercial and leave it as residential. Fine. But the thing is, what we did is, we wanted it to be presented to the voters, to let the voters decide. Not everybody who signed that petition was for it, but what they were for was the fact that we are going to vote on it. And it's not going to be somebody sitting, a town employee sitting in an office in Town Hall, saying, "This is what we're going to do, and you're going to like it." No, it's not that. It's we, the residents of Goffstown, are going to make the decision. And if we vote it down, we vote it down. And if we voted for it, we vote for it. That's what this whole country was made of. You know, it's not, you know, one or two people making the decision. You know, it's not, you know, one or two people making the decisions for everybody and making us live for it. So that's what that whole thing was about. So it's not us against them type of thing, it's us working as a town together to come up with a solution to an, obviously, a major problem. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question in regards to, again, the intent of the zoning ordinance, because there aren't lot numbers, I'm just, I'm just sort of black and white, if I don't see it, I'm not sure I get it. So do I understand that you're proposing this zoning change, and I'm not referring to what it's currently zoned, I'm just saying the lots that you envisioned included in your zoning change?
Right.
If I'm heading from one fourteen A to where?
Okay.
And I'm, my right-hand side, then, would be the county buildings across from the police station?
Right.
And then there would be the women's prison?
Right.
And then there would be the road?
That's the point.
That's the point.
That's the point.
Okay. And if I go down the left side, same exercise?
Right.
There's the county land?
Yep, where they have that farm, that community farm?
No, well, there's county land, and then the next intersection is actually Goffstown property, because the police station is on it.
Right, so, but if that property before the police station, is that where they have that county, not county, but everybody?
Ford dealership before. Ford dealership, I'm going in the same direction, I'm coming from one four...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I went backwards.
You just turned me around, I'm sorry.
I went backwards. So now I'm coming straight through, so there's the county land, the police department, Ford and Police.
Right.
Then there's the garden.
Right.
Is that where it stops?
Stops, right there. Because that'd be the straight line from that road, right across.
Mr. Winn, is it a straight line across the street? It is? Okay, thank you, I'm asking Mr. Winn.
Because everything beyond that is already, I think it's already zoned, it is, there is a lot of commercial property already after that point.
Well, I don't think it's actually, some of it is.
Some of it is.
But that's the lot you're talking about.
Right, and then back towards Manchester, from that line back.
So the community garden, owned by the county, and then the state prison, that's what you envisioned?
Right, and then all the way back.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Any questions, Brian?
Is that okay?
Certainly.
First of all, I think it's, I think it's really cool that you're trying to do something to sort of lower the taxes of the town by bringing more businesses, and I know many, many people in this town are focused on exactly that. I think it's a really good idea. I made a study of it a couple of years ago, when I was involved in economic development, I think it was about two years ago. What I looked at was towns of our size in this area, towns that were similar population, towns that were, towns that were not necessarily right on ninety-three, towns like Hooksett, towns like Dairy, excuse me, towns like London Dairy, towns like Merrimack. What I tried to compare, what I tried to find was, what kind of contribution they were getting from the commercial residents in town. Places like Merrimack, and places like London Dairy, and places like Concord, they have a lot of contribution. What I found was, the property taxes weren't that much different than ours were. I think that a lot of people operate under the assumption that a lot of businesses come into town, and it's going to suddenly drop the property taxes. But it's a little bit of a myth. I think it's terrific that you're involved, I think it's a really good thing to point towards. But I don't think that necessarily saying, "Okay, bring a bunch of businesses," and make it really easy for businesses to come in, is going to, is really going to change things like you think it's going to change things. There's a lot that companies look for when they select sites. A lot of people are working on this very hard. There's a lot that people look for when they select sites, to bring businesses, and to bring jobs, and to bring workers into town. And a lot of people are working on making Goffstown exactly that, and I thank you for contributing to that. And I hope you get more involved, and look at the other factors that we have to look at when we're looking at this. Because if it was simple, I think everybody would snap their fingers and do it. But there's a lot going on. So thanks for being involved, and I hope you stay engaged, because I'd be happy to share all the information that we've been working on for a while with you.
Well, you know, the problem, the thing is, is, that's well and good, and I appreciate what you've done and everything. But if we don't do something, we're going down the toilet in real quick.
I totally agree.
And sitting there and not doing something doesn't solve the problem. It's just putting blinders on and going through life and waiting for the big flush. So this is something, and it's something, anything is going to be better than nothing. And that's why we want to bring it to the, let the voters make that decision. Is my way the hundred percent the right way? Probably not. Is any of your ways the hundred percent the right way? Probably not. But what it does do is, it allows this to be a decision made by the town, and not by a selected few. So like any idea, it can get shot down, but somebody else may pick up a good portion of that idea and say, you know, "We can tweak it and make it better for the next time," or whatever the case may be. Fine, do it. But doing nothing doesn't solve a damn thing. So, you know, it's a shot, and that's what we're taking.
I just wanted to make a quick point, just wanted to correct myself. I don't agree that we're going down the toilet if we don't do something. I mean, I think we are going to do something. And I think that it's, the future is exciting. I'm optimistic about the future, and I think marvelous things are going to happen. So I just wanted to correct myself on that.
I hope they do, I really do. But I'm sick and tired of paying them through the nose, because I'm the poor sap that owns a house. You know, so trying to do something is better than doing nothing.
May I ask you a couple of questions in a different realm?
Yeah.
About these petitions, could you tell me a little bit about where you got them, how you collected those names?
Walking around, knocking on people's doors, having people that volunteered to go with us, and each taken a group and going out.
Where?
What do you mean, where? We were within our block, we even had some petitions set up in Mr. Heickel's garage, and people came in, as they came in, they signed them. We went all over the place.
There were a lot of addresses, you know, that were out of town, not out of town, but out of downtown, you know, up in the hill.
East Dunbar Road to the Hill, Page Hill.
Yeah.
It's easier to sign when you live there.
Right. The thing is, those probably people are probably the ones that stopped in at some of the, at Mr. Heickel's office or something, and signed, which is great.
And I think, yeah, if I could say, though, I don't think a page was done at mine, at Uptown Auto Fair.
We had people going out, all over the place, so...
Yeah, there were these all over the place, I don't want to, I certainly wasn't the only one.
No, but that was just an example, I was putting out, that we had one there.
Mr. Heickel's our neighbor.
And we, and we had, and we had people going out all over the place. So, and then they all came back, and they had their, and we actually went through the phone book to make sure that they, before we even submitted it, to make sure these people were, what we could verify on our own, before we even submitted it to the town. And then when the town went through it, they verified there. So...
Follow-up.
Does that answer? Follow-up, if you don't mind?
Yeah, go for it.
No, it's just about the signature collection. Was there any attempt made to contact all of the property owners on Mass Road? I know we just heard from one woman who was not contacted, and you said you went all out, so did you go up and down Mass Road and contact it?
I know for a fact that we had people going up and down Mass Road. I don't know, I don't know where they went, or where they exactly...
Because there are only three addresses here for Mass Road.
We, you know, I don't know, we had groups of people taking sections. So when they come back and say, "I covered this, okay, you covered that," you know, we're not, again, this was like grassroots effort, so we're just...
No, no, I understand, I just wondered, because there are not very many people from Mass Road.
Weren't fingerprinting people or holding them accountable, or anything like that? If they didn't get, if people didn't get hit, I apologize that you didn't get hit, because we wanted everybody that we could possibly get on there. I mean, for a grassroots, bare-bones effort, seventy-something signatures is pretty good. So...
Business owners do not live in Goffstown, and they're not registered voters, so that doesn't bother them.
How do you mean?
A lot of, like, a lot of owners, okay, that own businesses on Mass Road, they don't live in Goffstown.
Well, I guess I was thinking more of the houses, there were quite a few houses.
She was thinking, we were talking about the housing.
Yeah.
And I can't answer for every person we had volunteering going out, doing it.
So ma'am, were you saying you didn't check with the businesses, or you...
No, there's a lot of them that I know, from prior petitions that we went out, that a lot of business owners do not live in Goffstown. They live in Bedford, Manchester. Like, for instance, Mr. Paris, okay, he owns Paris's Autobody, but he doesn't live in Goffstown, so he can't sign that, because he lives in Bedford. He's not a registered voter.
But he could come tonight.
His signature doesn't count.
Yeah, okay.
And that goes to a lot of people, like, I believe, like, the other car wash, there's a lot, a lot of business owners, again, I'm not sure of all their names, but we remember from other petitions, that their signatures do not count, because they're not registered voters, that they don't live in Goffstown, that they own businesses and they pay taxes.
So madam, madam, if this is a concern mostly for residential people, why would they want it all zoned commercial? If this is, if this is a concern mostly for residential property owners, why would they want it all zoned commercial? What's the benefit?
Well, we already went through that. When I sat down and I spoke about that, we already went through that.
Why are those people, why would those people be interested?
Because what they could do, I'm going to answer her on this one, because I don't want to see her taking the brunt of people beating up on her. The idea is, that's, that majority of that area is commercial, is the zoned area, is blotches that are not. But also, the fact is, someone's living there, if they want to sell it to a commercial entity, if they want to, they are going to sell, it's going to be more valuable to them as a commercial lot than a residential, if it's in that, if it's already zoned and ready to go. So that's, that's part of the incentive, but you don't have to, that's the thing. It doesn't have to go commercial, you don't have to sell your house, you don't have to, you're not being a tax commercial unless you're using it as commercial. So...
So the major benefit would be that it would increase the value in the event of a sale?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I guess, that was a good, I just heard somebody from the audience say, "Why stop it at Henry Bridge Road, if that's the point?" Why stop it at Henry Bridge Road? Why didn't you have the article? And I'm asking you, because I'm assuming that you and your wife helped to do this.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
So I'm not, I'm sorry if you think I'm going for something, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to get information.
No, 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 I've got thick skin, go for it.
So I guess, based on something I just heard, why did you stop at Henry Bridge Road? Why didn't you just do it for the whole corridor, the Mass Road corridor?
Because the, after the Henry Bridge, you start getting into, and I'm assuming this partly, and I know in some places, it's not on town water, town sewer. And I could be correct, I could be corrected if I'm wrong on that.
I'm not on town water, and I'm in the...
Okay. You're in that section?
I'm in city water, but not on sewer.
Okay.
And in fact, when I had to put in a new septic system a year ago, they discouraged me from tying into it, because they didn't want to dig up one fourteen for me to tie into it.
Yeah, there's not sewer service all along the area that you've talked about. So what was the logic of that thought?
Okay, the logic, what we're assuming the logic would be, would be, thank you, I appreciate that, ma'am.
I didn't...
And you want to call me an ass again? Go for it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
So anyway, the, the, that is where most of your, our commercial is, is right along that block, that we, I mean, should we have carried it on? Maybe.
Okay.
I don't know. But that's where we stopped, because that is the area where everybody was pushing in other times to put more commercial in.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
I think they're commercial going, aren't they commercial and flex past the urban station? I mean, the whole, the whole Mass Road corridor, they're all commercial and flex zoned down there, so anyway...
He didn't, one of the proponents said they didn't like the flex zone, so I don't know why they didn't go right through it and rezone the flex zone.
Yeah, I don't know either. Everything, it has an end, and it has a beginning. Yes, Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have you given any consideration to the residential properties that would be rezoned commercial? And how the fact that they would be a non-conforming use have an effect on them?
And to be honest with you, Mr. Davanza, no. I didn't, you know, that's, I am, we are not the political savvy people, we're not the, we're trying to make a change. We're trying to make a change that we think is positive. Did we look at every single possible nuance that could erupt? No. I don't think we did. I think, I think we tried to, as far as what we understood, but did we, did we miss something? Did we not look at it a certain way? Did we not look at it from another set of eyes? It's possible. It's highly possible.
And the reason why I asked the question? On Mass Road, right across from the Century Twenty-One, is a new house. It's an undersized lot, they have a variance. Fellow bought that property, moves into this house, I don't know, within a year, I believe, it's gone up. I would like to have heard that somebody went onto this gentleman's door, knocked on his door, with the petition, explained the petition, and be able to answer the question to the man. If he asked, the question would be, "I have a residence that I just purchased, I have a variance, it's illegal, it's an undersized lot, and now I'm going to have a non-conforming use. What happens when I go to refinance my property?"
And that's a legit question.
Do we have the answer?
I don't have the answer to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I think we might have the answer, Phil, if you want to speak.
Something I was going to bring up, I'm a loan originator, and I've done loans in towns before, they're generally smaller, but towns that say have maybe one road go through them. When you do a loan for someone, the property has to be zoned residential. Now, it doesn't have to be only residential, but it can't be just commercial. So it would have to be a mixed use, where the lot is conforming to that, to the use of the property. And it's not just really being, we were talking about this before, it's not really just being grandfathered in, it has to be an acceptable use. So it can be commercial, but I've never seen anything strictly commercial for a residential home. It's always been business, residential, commercial, flex, whatever the town wants to call it. But that is a very valid statement of people wanting to refinance, or to sell their home to a residential buyer, not a commercial buyer, that the zoning does allow for the use of residences, not just commercial.
Right. Well, the zoning affects the ability to get paper on property under certain circumstances. This board might recall, and people who followed previous public hearings, and I won't say what year it is, because they all sort of meshed together at this age, but it was in the last few years that the owner of the property on the back road for EduCare came in with her own petition, warrant article, to rezone her property, because she had a non-conforming use in regards to her residence and the operation of her daycare, and she could not get financing. And as a result, she had done a petition to warrant it, that was one of the reasons given. And I believe that article ultimately passed, but there was some discussion about sort of that almost possibly being spot zoning, but that was one of the reasons that the owner of that property came in here, was because when she went to talk to loan originators, they were like, "Well, what is your property?" And it was, she couldn't answer the question, and she rezoned it. So I think that's where the question came from.
As long as the town could provide, you know, in writing, in this, you know, chart that says, you know, 521 Mass Road, zoned commercial, and clearly in the description for commercial would say something along the line of residential use permitted, as long as there's something along those lines, the property owners would be okay. But if it wasn't there, then that has a potential to be a real, real problem for people.
What, what would it take to put it there? What is it, what process?
I have no idea what the process would be with the town. My recommendation would be to have a zoning that allows for both residential and commercial. So if someone wants to sell their home to a commercial entity, if that ever happened, but if it did, then they'd be able to do so, so they could also sell residential. A zoning that covers both. That would be my suggestion for ease. Or it would be something that would take longer to change the zoning. I don't know if it's even possible for Goffstown to have something that says, you know, "These lots are grandfathered in and it's commercial, but the non-conforming use is allowed for this specific thing." The problem when you get into doing things that are a little weird and outside of the box is banks don't like that. There is no more, "Hey, Phil, my name's John. I need a loan for the house. You know me. I'm a good guy." That does not exist anymore. And actually, tomorrow, things are getting far worse. But when everything's outside of the box, it creates a real problem. So if a bank, an underwriter, someone isn't used to seeing something that's normal, it's really, really going to harm the owner. Even if it's legit, it could create a lot of static. The person may have to come before boards to get things done. I would highly recommend that if any zoning is changed, to make sure that it's a use that allows for both commercial and residential, if the goal is to have a commercial use tied to it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a note. Phil had brought up that address on the corner of Mass Road where the new house went up. That property owner actually sent in, or actually called the town hall, and Patty sent me a quick note just stating, she got a phone call from the owner, his name is Steven Della Vedova, 44, 444 Mass Road, said he could not attend tonight's meeting, but wanted to relay that he is against his property being rezoned commercial, as his property is currently zoned RSBO2 and the use is a residence. And I think, you know, that kinda goes along with the, the statements of, you know, the use versus the zoning and being able to utilize the property.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Great, thank you.
I didn't even, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Brian.
You may, you may speak. It's your microphone.
That's the whole idea behind this. We're not saying, it's, this is, it's like going totally off the wall. It's the voters that are gonna decide. So if, if all these people don't want it to go through, it's, it's up to us as the voters. It's, it's something that's been presented. The voters control this. I mean, you know, I, I got, you know, arrows being born through the back of my head right now, and I don't really, it doesn't, that doesn't bother me so much as the fact that everybody's, everybody's confused with the idea that this is our town, so it's us as voters who will make the decision. It's not me that's making the decision for anybody else. Everybody's making their own decision. That, that's why it's a warrant article. That's why it's on the ballot. You know, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, their own ideas, and I support that. You know, twelve years in the military, I defended everybody's right for that damn opinion. You know, so that's what it is. So if you don't, if you don't like this idea, don't vote for it. Period. Your vote counts. But it beats the heck out of sitting back on your thumbs and, and wondering why somebody else is not doing something. So we took, we stuck our necks out. That's, you know, that's, and that's all I have to say. It's the voters that are gonna make the decision.
Donna?
Could I just ask a clarifying question of you in regards to if the wording on the warrant article had included residential and commercial, that some of the property owners would not have the problems that you were considering? So that if, for instance, it didn't pass this year, but it came up again next year with the two words combined residential and commercial, that, that problem would be resolved?
Right. I mean, any vote, and definitely, I don't think anyone's talking against you or anything like that. I completely support Brian with anyone trying to change the town or try to get some business in here. I would ask people to do more than just to attend a meeting. It's been a real eye-opener for me being on this board and the Economic Development Council. There's a lot of people in Goffstown really trying to do good work, and it has blown my mind how much it takes to get anything done. So please, keep trying. The question is if we're, and nothing can be done to the town, from my understanding, whether it's this or anything else, without that vote from the town. So it can never be a dictatorship, first of all. But with this, before anything goes before the town, we will just wanna make sure that if it gets a thumbs up or a thumbs down, no matter what it is, that if it got a thumbs up, it isn't going to harm that person because people don't know the facts behind it. That's, that's the only point that I brought up, you know, coming off of Phil, is, you know, to say it's a vote a hundred percent, we would just wanna make sure people had the facts and to say, "Yes, this sounds right. I'm all for, only to find out in two years. Oh, my God, I had no idea this would even be an issue for me." You know, that, that's just something, whether it's this vote or any other vote.
Right, sure.
We just wanna make sure there wouldn't be unintended consequences.
And if I may, thank you very much for doing this. Well, I wanna just make a comment. Thank you for doing this. And sometimes, and I get your, I get the part where something needs to be done. We're listening to budget committee meetings. We're listening to the selectmen. We're listening to all the boards, the school board. Everybody wants to spend more, but we don't have the revenue, and it's gonna be put directly on the shoulders of everybody, everybody that owns a, a home. And it's been done, and they're talking ten percent in next year's budget. It's a proposed amount. So I really have to commend you for trying to do something of which nobody else is doing anything to try to control our property taxes. Either way, however this goes, I wanna thank you.
All right.
For your effort.
All right. Can we hear from people who came from the public to speak to this?
Yes.
I'd like to hear more of them.
Okay, so we've heard...
Okay, great. You're all done with that?
If, if, I just, I wanna, I wanna get this moving along. If you, you can certainly do that. This lady in the blue jacket had a question. If you would, please come to the microphone.
I'm Nancy Brown, and I live on Meadow Lane, which is the small road right by the county nursing home. That whole area, the only businesses that are in that area, really from that Shaw's Plaza to Henry Bridge Road, all the businesses in that area are low-traffic businesses. So they really fit in well with a residential area. So if we go to commercial, I could get a high-volume business next door, across the street, someone with lights on. That's gonna make a big difference. And also, when, is it a two-thirds vote that it takes to get this through? Is that what I read somewhere?
No, fifty percent.
Oh, only fifty percent?
Fifty-one percent.
Of the town has to vote for it?
Yes.
Fifty percent of the town doesn't live in that few-mile section. So we could be doomed whether we wanted it or not. I say it could be nothing, especially when some people in that general area are for it. So that's the problem. Now, another thing is, kind of along the lines of what he was saying, is with the property, when you go to refinance, you know, it's gotta have the right usage listed on there. My house is residential. It was residential when I purchased it. If it had commercial zoning, I would've had no interest in purchasing it. So now I'm thinking, when I'm ready to sell, someone else is gonna think that same thing. Am I gonna have a gas station next door? So that could be a real problem even when you're trying to sell it. I've got a rural development loan on my house because I was on the rural part of Goffstown. It stopped at the 114 intersection. I don't know if it'll affect my loan. I imagine since I already have it, it's not, but...
I can tell you it won't. And as of tomorrow, no one will get a rural development loan in Goffstown because they're losing ten towns tomorrow in Southern New Hampshire. So you don't have to worry about that.
You're, that, you're on that street that goes like before the 114 turn?
Yes.
And you're on Mass Road?
Yeah.
Kinda like across the house?
I'm on the four.
You're on the four? Kinda like across the house that's for rent?
Yes, exactly. I don't know if that person that owns that house is here, but they just put a lot of money remodeling. I'm sure they don't want to go to business.
Isn't that zoned agricultural? Are you zoned agricultural or residential right there?
I believe it's residential.
She's residential.
Do you have a clarification?
She's right along the, the small road by the nursing home?
Yeah.
Can you zoom in? I can, I can zoom into it.
On the, between the street and the Mass Road? Not on the other side of that street?
No, there's only two houses on the other side.
That's right.
And I feel really bad for them if someone does buy all of us on this side out.
If you're commercial.
Okay, so...
If we're commercial and someone wants to buy that segment from 114 to Meadow Lane to do something.
I don't know if you can see my mouse moving here?
Yep.
That's Meadow Lane. Those are all zoned agricultural. Right next to you is the county property, which is zoned CIFC.
Oh, so they're ag. Oh, that's the rural loan. Okay.
She has zoned agricultural.
I don't even know the difference between agricultural and residential. Does that mean I can make a farm in my yard?
You can have chickens.
I have chickens along 114. I'm sure I'd be spoken to by this...
That is, there are, there are three of those four properties, I think, that are proposed to be rezoned. I just turn the layer on and off.
I think there's five along that side.
One, two, three, maybe four. Yeah, there's four of the five properties.
Because the other one doesn't actually abut.
Oh, it's on the corner.
The other one doesn't actually touch Mass Road. So I don't know which one you are. Maybe you're out of it.
No, no. I'm on the corner.
Okay.
And my lot is too small for any one business to want it. So it would have to be someone that comes in to take all of them. And then you're leaving these other two people on the other side with all that.
Or it's too small for anybody to want for a commercial.
I just don't see where this is gonna help anything. From the Shaw's Plaza towards Henry Bridge Road, I just don't see how the businesses that are already there are all low-volume businesses, not ones that have a lot of cars in and out. Those kind of businesses are more the other direction towards Manchester.
I think they're zoned commercial, except Century 21 is RSBOD. I think they're zoned commercial. Anyway, anymore, anything else that you'd like to
No, I guess my biggest concern is, you know, like you said, if your neighbors go commercial and you don't, you're stuck with it, and you're not gonna be able to sell it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you. Phil?
I'm assuming since you didn't state that you're in favor of this, that you don't particularly...
No, I don't, well, I didn't know when I came in here whether I was or wasn't. But knowing that there's really no plan, we don't have people that are looking at this property, I think there's enough vacancies in the business district of Goffstown that we don't need to spread up Mass Road further. And if we do, then let's take it all the way in, right into our quaint little village.
And, and on that point, ma'am, right behind you is the county property that was zoned commercial-industrial-flex zoning, which is a, which is a mixed-use zoning. And I don't know if you know that, but there's five hundred, eight hundred acres of county property that was rezoned a year ago. So you may in fact have some, we don't know because it's the county's property, and they are looking to possibly do stuff or they wouldn't have had it rezoned. So right in your backyard, the county changed it from agricultural to commercial-industrial. You could have...
And I wasn't notified as an abut?
I, I don't know.
I wasn't notified as an abut. I'm not asking.
Okay. But I can tell you that, that seriously, and Brian, would you please move from the back of this lady's property to the county property? See that, that big red or brown up there?
Mm-hmm.
That's all behind your house, and that is, a year ago, was changed from agricultural to commercial-industrial-flex zoning, which is anything. So you could have...
All right, so that map, the red, I thought was what was proposing to change, but some of it's already...
It's gonna bring that back to commercial.
It would bring it back to commercial.
It would bring that back to commercial. So you may not have large industries. That's a lot of land out there, and the potential for the county to do something on that would be right on your backyard.
Well, you know what? If they did something big back there, then maybe someone would be interested in my property as a piece of commercial property.
Okay.
That little sub shop could do very well if there was an industrial park over there.
I like the way you think.
I like the way you think. So, so...
And then I can sell it, and I'll probably get a better price because it's commercial. But right now, I am underwater with my house because I bought in 2008.
Like all of us.
No, not like all of us. Most of the people on that street either just bought within the last year, year and a half, or have been there for a very long time.
Right.
Not at the height like me.
I hear ya. But, 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 but just, just, what, what, well, I'm not gonna speak to the, to the petitioner, but I understand this project. I understand this Mass Road corridor. I was on the Plan Pernardville, which I, which I opposed the whole way. I opposed the Plan Pernardville, but there were some good parts of that, be it the, the Mass Road corridor. And we spoke, we spoke a lot, very, we spoke an awful lot on fixing the Mass Road corridor and adding a commercial tax base to the, to the general fund of Goffstown to help with the property taxes of the individual homeowners. But remember that...
The gentleman next to you said that really isn't gonna change that much.
Well, it's not under oath. It's not an affidavit. I would beg to differ with the gentleman next to me that that will be, as, as long as they stop spending the money. But if you give government more money, generally, they'll find a way to spend it before they get it. What we'd like to do is, I think what, what this would do is at least give the general fund more opportunity to, to receive more tax money. And then we need people on budget committee, school board, Board of Selectmen to hold back the spending. That's the challenge.
Now, by changing these properties to commercial, does it entice a business to come in more? Because we have vacant commercial areas. Why changing these other residential zones to commercial is gonna entice them to come to town?
And they're not quite residential. They're residential...
Or agricultural or whatever.
They're residential small business office. From, from Moose Club Park to the 114 intersection is residential small business office. That's why you have a brick, a brick commercial building in there. You have an, you have a, an antique shop in there. You've got a perpetual yard sale in there that's zoned in a RSBOD. You've got, you've got a gift shop. You've got, you've got two schools. You've got a Montessori, I think, and another daycare. So to think that it is strictly clean residential is, is a, is a stretch. This will, this will do other benefits. But I don't wanna take the time of this floor. This is your floor. I can also tell you that that part of the, of the, in the traffic count that was taken from Mass, from Moose Club Park to the 114 intersection in 2010 is thirteen thousand cars. Thirteen thousand cars.
Per day.
Per day. On that stretch of the road from Moose Club Park to the 114 intersection, and it goes up higher after the Moose Club intersection, probably in front of your house...
Yeah, because it's all the weird people heading to and from work.
Well, we can't stop them. In front of your house, it's eighteen thousand cars a day.
Yeah, I know. And you know, no, that has nothing to do, I won't bring it up.
Right.
But the placement of that tester was poor.
That traffic count gives you a heck of a potential. That's, anyway, I just wanna let you know.
I'm sorry. Do you know where the traffic count is today?
Sorry. I'll let someone else take the floor.
Thank you very much for your comment. This, I'm sorry, Bill, this lady's had her hand up, if you don't mind, please.
I need to answer though, I go 513 Mass Road and 515 Mass Road. And I don't really have any questions because we went through this all last year with this whole commercial thing, except they're extending it this year. And it didn't go through because a bunch of us got together and did a petition and forced them to have two-thirds of the vote. But my thing, my comment tonight is, I don't like how they didn't go to a lot of people who live on Mass Road to kinda talk to the us, or who live there, or who rented, or whichever, to discuss it with them. There's been people that have owned those houses since 54. I heard a woman say she's been there for seven years. I think that concerns me, that nobody would consider that stretch of residential area to talk to those people, see how we feel. It affects us. It doesn't affect where Shaw's already is or whatever. That's all commercial and going, but what's gonna happen where we are? And we went through all this last year. I was here at this meeting, and we fought it then, and we'll fight it again because it's not being educated to us to exactly what, what are you trying to do? And what, it's affecting us, people who live there. And nobody came to our doors to speak to us, and I think that bothers a lot of us on Mass Road. And I think that bothers a lot of us on Mass Road. And that's what, I guess, probably why you have a lot of people from Mass Road here.
Yeah.
Because we got a letter in the mail and here we go again, round two, year two.
Could happen every year. We can't, probably can't.
Just to let some of the other people know who got letters this year, because now they're extending it the other way.
Yeah.
Because they didn't know about it last year.
Right.
So it just concerns me.
Appreciate your comments.
As an owner on Mass Road, nobody ever came to us. Nobody called us. Nobody checked in to see how we felt. I'm sure there's a bunch of other people here too.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make the comment. No questions for me, because I already know what they're trying to do.
You're on the corner, let's see, are you 515? By the Plaza? By the, are you, are you near the 515?
Right across from Catherine Street, almost.
Near the...
I don't technically live there. I own both those properties.
Okay.
But I live right next to Bob and...
Okay.
He lives right there. But I know the Turclos are here. I know it affects them. I, I know a lot of those people have lived there forever. They've been there forever. My father-in-law, which who owned that house, was there since the 50s. So now they're gonna try and put all this commercial in there? It's fine like it is. There's all that property that you just said that's commercial. Put it there. Why affect all these people who have been living there for so long? That's just all I had to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Marlene Turcotte and I live at 523 Mass Road. And like, um, she said we went through this again last, we went through this last year. And you, John, did the petition last year. My question is, and I'm not sure who I wanna address on this, but why, again, like, like she said, why isn't it, Brian, when I, when we had to get the other petition to, to, to bring it back to the voters, I had to go to all the people on Mass Road that it affected? Because I needed to get the acreage to get it back on the ballot?
Phil, you wanna explain a protest petition?
Yeah, that's, that's a protest petition.
Right. But, okay, but just, can I finish, please?
Sure.
Why is it that I had to go and get all the people that were involved on Mass Road, get them to sign that protest petition? But yet, when other people have a petition, they don't have to involve the people that it involves? Which to me is not right.
I think, I think the answer is state statute. I think the answer is state statute. You could talk to your legislators and have them try to change that and conquer.
Well, I would hope that out of common courtesy, that we would be approached, but we weren't. And that, I think, bothers a lot of people. More so than the whole idea behind it. It's just that we weren't approached about it. And it involves our house, our lives, our kids, grandchildren, everything that we've worked for, so...
Great, thank you. Joanne, if you'd like.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Duffy. I live on Addison Road. I'm a 30-year resident. I'm also a member of the zoning board. Excuse me. I have some, a couple things I need to bring up regarding this. First of all, I'd like to bring up the fact that there is a conflict of interest with two board members. Richard Meany, who's not here tonight, signed the petition. I'm not sure if you're going to be voting at the end of this evening. But if you don't and continue it, I would ask that Richard Meany not be part of the deliberations. And, uh, John, I know that you've been very involved in this. I just received a copy of a letter to the editor that you wrote, as well as, um, I heard you on the radio show yesterday, um, sort of promoting this effort. I'm sad to see that you're sitting there. You should be recusing yourself, uh, according to RSA 500A:12A. Two of the reasons are expects to gain or lose on the disposition of the case, or has directly or indirectly given his opinion, or has formed an opinion. You stated on the radio yesterday that you thought that by doing, uh, the zoning change that it would, um, the right word, the exact words, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. Thought I had it written down. Let's see. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. That the property would become more marketable. And since you own property in that zone, um, I am asking that you recuse yourself. And when you recuse yourself as a planning board member, you need to step down from the hearing itself as well, not just the deliberations. It's, it's not, it's up to you. We, the public or the board can't force you to do that. But I'm asking if you would take this under advisement and consider it seriously, because you shouldn't be sitting there. So that's the first thing. If people read the commercial district, the, um, the regulations that we have in place now, dwelling units are actually permitted in the commercial zone. But, and in fact, you can, compared to the R S B O D to the commercial zone, you can actually have double the number of residential units. If they just have to be part of a mixed-use development, which is also allowed in the commercial zone. So for those who thought that they were possibly preventing the workforce housing or the multifamily development, this doesn't cut it. They're still allowed. So I, I'm not sure about that issue. As far as nonconformance, um, one of the board members earlier talked about the potential of not being able to receive, um, possibly loan or refinancing on your house. All of the properties who are currently not zoned commercial and that now will, would be zoned commercial, all of those properties become nonconforming. And it's the use that becomes nonconforming. The, um, the problem with that is, if you go and you wanted to add on to your home and even add a deck on to your home, you would then need a variance. The ordinance under 14811 states that no such nonconforming use shall be enlarged or increased nor extended to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied at the effective date of the amendment. So all of those homes now become nonconforming, which is not a great thing to do when you're talking about rezoning property. The setbacks would change. The front setbacks would go from 25 feet to 15. So the buildings would be closer to the road if there were new buildings placed, in its place. The rear setbacks would change from 30 to 25 feet. So they would go closer to the residential land behind. The side setbacks would change from 15 feet to 10. They would also go closer to their abutting properties. The building coverage would change from 25% to 40%. And the building footprint would change. They can go from a maximum of 8,000, which is what they're allowed now in the R S B O, to 15,000. So you need to take all of that under consideration. Another issue in the commercial zone is that you need a 50-foot buffer between residential and commercial. Lot of, most, not all, but many of these lots, especially the ones that are, um, kind of gathered together there where the, the residential homes are one right after another. If you put a 50-foot buffer on one of those lots, you wouldn't have any room to develop anything. So I think that there's big problems with this whole thing. I went through the map carefully in the last two days. I went through the zoning map and, um, I just wanted to point out some properties that would have a problem. Three Orchard Street is, is two houses in on Orchard from Mass Road. It's the Sousa property, the Sousa sign property. They are zoned R S B O D. But because they are two houses in, not directly abutting Mass Road, they would remain R S D, R S B O D, which doesn't make any sense, because that's an actual business, yet they're not included in this rezoning. The 13 homes on Preston Street, which is the development north of Shaw's on the opposite side of the road, there are, there's, it's a dead-end subdivision. Three of those lots would be zoned commercial. Three would be R S B O D. And three, and some, sorry, seven would be residential with this new zoning. Timberwood, the condominium, residential condominium, would go from residential two to commercial. Makes no sense. The house behind you, John, you are zoned R S B O D along Mass Road and you're on a corner. The property right behind you is zoned R S B O D. He would be the lone wolf sitting there as R S B O D if those properties along Mass Road were zoned commercial. And then he would just be sitting there by himself as R S B O D. And then behind him would be residential. Meadow Lane, the woman over here stated that she lives on Meadow Lane. If you look at the properties, they don't all abut. There's five residential homes on Meadow Lane. Only four of them abut Mass Road. There's one more that has property in between, which is owned by the county. So that one property would remain agricultural and the rest of them would go commercial. The county owns 244 acres. I never realized it until today when I was looking at the maps. But the county land goes, because of the odd shape to it, goes all the way back to Addison Road, which is where I live. It's one lot next to me is the county land would abut my next-door neighbor's lot. So that land would now become commercial. 292 Mass Road, which is Mr. Wynn's property across from Henry Bridge. The, um, article was so vaguely written that it, because it didn't, this is the problem when, when you do a rezoning, you need to identify the lots that you're rezoning. If you just use boundaries, it says, um, "from Henry Bridge." It doesn't say "from the center line of Henry Bridge." It doesn't say "from the northern portion of Henry Bridge." So Mr. Wynn's property is across from Henry Bridge. However, it's not the entire property. It's just a portion of the property. So the question is, is his lot included? Who knows? It's not, it's not on a map. There was no map submitted nor lot numbers. So I am not against commercial development at all. I just wanted to correct somebody on the board who said that Hooksett's tax rate is lower than our, I'm sorry, higher than ours. Hooksett's tax rate is $4 lower than ours. We have a 25% commercial rate with our, um, I'm sorry, commercial growth compared to our residential. However, you can't really compare Hooksett to Goffstown. It's a totally different community. It has three exits off of 93. You can't really look at it that way and say, well, this one has this and this one has that. You really have to look at the overall plan. And somebody who really knows what they're doing has to look at this zoning and do it very carefully, not just by a, a petitioned article. The permitted uses in the commercial zone are larger type uses than what's allowed in the R S B O D. One of the things you could put in the commercial zone would be a concert hall, a theater, a hospital, a motel hotel. You can do outdoor display, so you can have, you know, whatever type of display that coincides with your business outside of your store. And you can also do an adult video or bookstore by special exception. Special exception is permitted use. They just have to meet the five criteria. It's not that difficult. It doesn't appear to me anyway that there was any thought or logic in this when the author was writing up this petition. And I would strongly recommend you to not, and I would strongly recommend that you not recommend this article. The voters count on the planning board's recommendation. This is poorly written, poorly thought out, and really should go nowhere. And Mr. Heickel, again, I'm asking you to step down. And if you were to step down, you would take that under consideration now, not at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, Mr. Wynn, please, if you'd like to speak.
So I take it you're deciding not to take that under consideration?
Correct. I'm gonna sit here. I've, I spoke with, um, the town attorney today.
You spoke with Bill Drescher?
Yes. And we, and we discussed, um...
I can't hear you.
I discuss, I, this, this afternoon I spoke with Bill Drescher. He's the, uh, town attorney. And I mentioned to him, uh, my, uh, my, how do you say this? I, I, what's the word? I, uh, huh? No, my, um... My, yes, thank you. He said I don't have a conflict of interest. So thank you for that, thank you for that, for those words.
So last year they asked you to step down and you did. This year, they're asking you to step down and you don't.
That was gonna be my follow-up question, John, because this was an article that was taken up last year and the same issue of, um, conflict of interest came up. And you did step down. So how is your...
A point of order, please. The issue is not the same this time as it was last time?
A point of order? The chair is running the meeting and you're here to speak on the zoning article? That's what the public hearing is noticed for.
Two years ago, the petition, I was the, I was the first signer of the petition and I had signed the petition. This petition I have not signed.
Actually, John, when conflict of interest positions have come up before the board on other things, the two fairly clear conflict of interests, especially when you're on a planning board or if you're in a butter, if there's a zoning article that comes up for a development and you're on a butter, it's pretty clear that that's considered a, a conflict and you're asked to, to step down. And the reason you're asked to step down is because it can invalidate the whole vote. It becomes a challenge legally that generally is upheld. And then the other reason, which is very specific in statute, and I think you've, I've actually seen Richard on his little thing, when it's for statehouse stuff, it comes up, I think. If you have any sort of pecuniary, I think might be the statutory language, interest in it. And I think that was the speaker's point, that since you own property and your publicly stated position has been that it's going to increase the value of the property, you clearly, um, benefit financially, in your own opinion, from the passage of this article. So, um, you may consider it different, and I don't know whether it is or not, because I don't know whether you're, I assume you're still on the property the same. But I, I would just like to point out for the record that, um, abutting to the actual parcel under consideration is considered a conflict that is reviewable by a court. And the statute specifically directs that pecuniary interests are a conflict of interest and therefore people who are subject to them should recuse themselves. And I appreciate that you got Bill Drescher's opinion, because the ultimate decision, as you know, for somebody to recuse themselves is on them.
Right.
Um, we can't force you to do anything, nor can the members of the public. But I think that is the logic in the request and the language of the statute is pretty clear. And you've been pretty vocal about your support of this, including posting on webpages in regards to your positions.
Well, I'm a resident of, I'm a resident of Goffstown as well.
Well, your problem is you posted on the webpage as chairman of the planning board, John. It's pretty clear.
On which webpage?
On a Facebook webpage in regards to supporting this article in rezoning Mass Road. You posted as chairman of the planning board.
If I could speak, um, I was never on this planning board for 18 years and I also chaired it. And I'm well aware of the state law on this. And you can be a resident of the town and speak your mind about whatever you would like to. I have nothing against that. However, you can't also, at the same time, chair or sit on the board. I'd like to submit this for the record. It's from the, um, website of the Planning Association of, no, what am I saying? The State's Planning and Energy Office website regarding disqualification lays it all out there. And you definitely should really consider this, John, because if the vote gets challenged, like Barbara said, it's not just your vote, it's the entire board's vote. And that would not be a good thing.
I have a question.
Yes, Phil. Yes, Phil.
From what I hear here and what I'm hearing, my understanding is, John, that you're in favor of this petition?
Am I in favor of this petition? I support expanding commercial use and commercial tax base in Goffstown.
So you're, you're in favor of this petition?
No, I can't say that. I can say that I am in favor of expanding commercial tax base in Goffstown.
So the answer to my question is that you don't know if you're in favor of this?
That's correct.
I have a printout of a website that says change Mast Road zoning to commercial. And posted as one of the supporters is John Heikel.
Did John Heikel support that or who wrote, or did somebody write that?
It says John Heikel, owner at Uptown Auto Repair, added by Dave Narby, and-
Did I write that or did somebody else?
I have no idea, John, but I do know that you did write about accepting comments from the public on this issue as chair of the planning board.
And sent out an email.
And sent out an email in regards to coming out to speak in favor of it. So again, I don't want to feel like you're getting it. I'm just saying Joanne brought up the point and I think it's come up before. And I don't really see the difference today as compared to the prior year. If anything, John, you've been much more vocal and out there in regards to it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, excuse me, Bill Wynn, Mr. Wynn, Bill Wynn had the floor.
Or can I just say something real quick?
Can you wait for, I'm sorry, but can you just wait for Bill to do this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Wynn, 292 Mast Road, Goffstown, New Hampshire. I was on economic development about, I don't know, 12, 15 years ago and I follow it. And it hasn't done anything in 12, 15 years different than what it's doing today. It's still in the same spot, no disrespect. However, when I look at this particular petition which I signed, it has a lot of benefit to it. Contrary to what Ms. Duffy had to say about it of being not good, it's actually very good. It does provide buffer. You can look at the streets all you want. You can pinpoint any area. No matter what side of the fence you're on, there's going to be pros and cons. Now let's think about this just for a second. Commercial of all property, a budding Mast Road. Let's take the apartments that Joanne mentioned. Those particular apartments would be a commercial property. But I can tell you right now, there's not a thing in that homeowners association that is going to allow anybody to run a commercial business out of that venue. If you look at the RS BODs that are behind potential commercial lots along Mast Road, that's a buffer, as far as I'm concerned. Then their residential behind that, that's a buffer, as far as I'm concerned. Let's get away from the thought that one size fits all, because that seems to be where everybody thinks. Commercial, commercial, commercial. Oh, my God, it's a box this big and everything's commercial. Your lot is a certain size. You're not going to find an array of lots that are going to fit any particular business in a commercial network to get something done. If somebody wants to operate a commercial business out of their today present residential home along Mast Road with this change, they will be able to do that. Now, let's not, let's not go anti-tax, which I think Joanne is, anti-commercial, which I think she is and she proved it tonight. Because if we have people going in front of the planning board to get a variance on a commercial lot, let's go ahead and live with that scenario. If we have people in town that want to do a variance on a RS BOD or a residential lot, that's a fight all day long. What fight would you rather have? Would you rather have people come into your planning board and zoning board and ask for variances and exceptions or whatever you have to say? That is on an established commercial lot because you need five feet. Or would you lot, and be pro-business? That is pro-business. This article is good. It provides the buffer. It allows people to do things on Mast Road. Let's get away from the thought of that one size again. 67, 68, 69, and 70 along Mast Road, for example, as for discussion purposes, might want to get together and say, hey, you know what? Let's put something in here. My lot's not big enough. This builder approached me. He's interested in our four properties. Now, what do we have to worry about as far as buffers? It's already commercial. It promotes business. It promotes higher taxes. If this particular zoning does not allow workforce housing, and I'm going to use the one next to Rite Aid, which I don't believe it does, part of the reason I signed it, I do, and Gady Bennett brought up an excellent point. Why do we sit here and ask the taxpayers to lose money every day of the week when we say, let's build workforce housing, bring a couple of kids in, let's expense the cost of $23,000 to editate those kids and come up with the fact that, oh, my God, that property only generates $300 to $200 in taxes every year, that's going to cost the rest of the town X number of dollars to the tune of $20,000. Are we stupid? It sure sounds like it. This article is an excellent article to move this town forward the way and in the control of the people of this town and not in the control of what's in Town Hall. And I hope this board approves it. And Mr. Heikel, when I've heard you, you have said, I am speaking as John Heikel. Your property is not for sale, your residential property. Vote. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions?
Just a, just a point, John. You have come out in writing specifically supporting this article as a private market-based, non-government subsidized plan to give tax relief to the residents and community. And you've actually listed in print, community benefits in support of the warrant petition article to zone all properties with frontage on Mast Road. So there is no question, John, you have previously stated your support for this article. Just to be clear on the record, and so your continued presence on the board in regards to this, in fact, your presence from the very beginning of this could potentially invalidate the vote in total of this board.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion.
All right. And then follow up to our, because I understand you're, I'm not going to, it was handed to me, so I just read it into the record. I'm not going to continue to go on. You've clearly made the decision to continue to sit. And this is a very unusual public hearing, probably the most unusual that I've ever been at in regards to how it's going forward. And I, and I recognize that it's quarter of nine and we haven't gotten one article done of the 16. So I'm-
Well, we didn't, yeah, we didn't have time to notice at last meeting. That's why we're here.
No, I, I know. I'm just sort of, we might need to talk about a plan after we get through this warrant article. And I appreciate Mr. Wynn coming and speaking as an individual and I, and we all, of course, recognize everybody's individual rights to speak. And we've had the opportunity to ask people who have spoken some questions. So I'm wondering whether Mr. Wynn would answer some questions in regards to his property that abuts the proposed zoning changes. My recollection-
Hold on, let me sit down.
My recollection, and remember, my ears are spotty at this point.
Go.
I believe you've owned that house for a long time.
Yes.
And actually, when you bought that house, there was a house across the street from you, right?
It was the, yes, there was a house across the street.
It was residential across the street from you at the time.
It was a split zone. It was agricultural and residential.
And there was a zoning article to change that to commercial. And it was zoning for that lot only, as I recall, the zoning change, wasn't it?
Yeah, you're talking about 15, 16 years ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to put things in perspective.
Well, I suggest you that we can go to the minutes 15, 16 years ago and we'll be having the same discussion about taxes, commercial, residential, budget committee and all of that.
Oh, you're probably right. But there's a different feeling today about what people can afford and what people can do. I just want to go back to today comparatively from 15, 16 years ago.
Well, if you have-
In an effort to answer your question.
No, that, that's fine, but I'm not here to talk about CPI indexes. I'm here to talk about property. I'm trying to remember, we're here on zoning. One of 15 or 16 zoning articles.
Okay, and your question is?
Your property is for sale and it's being advertised as potential joint use for larger commercial use. Is that correct?
It's being advertised for whatever somebody wants to try and use it for. We have no, we don't care what they put it out there for. We're not dictating what the, what the company is-
And what is the zoning of your property right now?
You tell me. You, you're asking me the question. You tell us in the town what the zoning of my property is.
I'll have to look at a map.
Thank you.
I don't want to miss-
I'll let you, I'll let you do that. And your question is? Your next question.
You were very much against, you were very much against the Irving Station being across from you.
My recollection is, Mr. Wynn.
Okay, let's talk about that for a second, okay? The Irving Station has 27 conditions on it. They continue to violate it. They have violated it up to two, three weeks ago when I went back in there and told them, you better fix the lights and get them off at 11 o'clock. Or I'm going to do everything I can to get you guys shut down.
So my question-
You want to, you want to, you want to talk about a property with 27 conditions to make it happen? That's what happens, just like what I just discussed, when you have a residential property trying to put a big piece of business on it versus what I just talked about of a commercial property trying to put something on it that's reasonable. And I am not going to answer any of your questions because this is stupid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bennet, you had your proven-
And Chairman Heikel, I apologize to Mr. Wynn if he thought I was out of order. I thought this was sort of in keeping with the rest of the meeting. But perhaps, given that, we might want to consider the rest of the meeting. It is quarter of nine. We are now having repeat speakers. I suspect that there are people who have not spoken to this article who would like to. And in my experience for public hearings, we take sort of public comment. And we ended up with this back and forth because we asked the petitioner to say why they presented it and-
Correct.
And I've contributed to it and I admit it, but I know I need to leave to get a glass of water.
There's a hand here.
I'm going to go real quick, real quick.
Who? I haven't seen it. Alan's hand, I'm sorry, I didn't see Alan's hand.
Carol Holden was at the very beginning.
She's blocked, okay.
We're going to do it real quick, okay? If we're talking, if we're talking about conflicts, okay, I just want to say Plan Prenardville could have had many conflicts with Barbara being on the board, okay? Because she was part of Southern New Hampshire Planning, okay? Mr. Hanson, he was part of the Economic Development. And Mr. Devanza was part of the Iron Corporation or, or, there was some kind of corporation that you were on with Mr. Martz.
I'm still on it, Industrial Corporation.
Industrial Corporation, okay?
Does anybody know what the Industrial Corporation is?
Okay, I'm, I'm just speaking, okay? There might be-
I'm being accused of being, I'm telling I'm on, what is it?
Okay, Industrial Corporation.
Point of, point of order. I really need to get it controlled.
Now, why are they against this? Okay, because they want the ready set go program. So if you have to step down and not vote, I say they step down and not vote too and use alternates.
I would like to explain what the Industrial Corporation is.
You'd be next. Carol, yes. Yes, Carol, yes. Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Holden.
I was a deputy governor.
Good. You never do. I appreciate it.
And I just want to tell you that I've been asked a lot of questions like, who's in charge of the county property? And I have a statement here from the RSA. I know the delegation would like to probably take over the care and custody, but it would be a fight. The administration of Hillsborough County Government is vested with the three-member Board of Commissioners elected every two years from three county districts, and I'm not going to go into all of it. The board duties are-
Carol, do you allow?
Sure, I will. The board duties are mandated by New Hampshire Statute RSA 28 and includes the custody and care of all property and real estate belonging to the county. It didn't say in the beginning, then I'm Carol Holden, County Commissioner, District Three, and I represent Goffstown and 23 other towns. They're responsible for the governing administration, overall supervision of the Department of Corrections, Nursing Home, Public Assistance, Human Resources, and Departments not under the statutory control of the other elected officials. The Commissioners also have budget review over all county departments. One thing that we did notice, and I was handed something from a person here tonight, the county is in the position to do a protest petition pursuant to RSA 675:5. The Commissioners have not taken a formal vote on this. I came tonight to listen and to report back to the, to the board. Hillsborough County of 329 Mast Road has 28 acres and 400 Mast Road on this, this side of Mast Road has 253 acres bordering Mast Road. I do have a couple of questions. So that's one option that we are, we're paying attention to. We can do it, whether we will do. We do have the 20% and we have that from the town of Goffstown. We just got noticed on this January 2nd. We had a meeting on the 8th, so we did discuss this and we're looking at our options. We wonder why the notice was not given. No one came by to knock on the county door.
No, I didn't. I would say that-
Your property is not in it.
And we wonder why the decision was made not to, to stop at 114 and not, why was the county was not involved in any way in this? You know, when we do anything, we go to the planning board and we speak with you and we work with you. And we recently had a meeting with the, very successful meeting with the Selectmen. And everybody is looking for ways to reduce the county taxes and ours, they bring, we're pretty level this year. And I can get you the, the information on that. So we just wonder why we weren't contacted. We had no idea. And we had our first board meeting on January 8th. So, and as, as we, we discussed, it's New Hampshire RSA 67, 675:5 provides for a, the submitting of a zoning ordinance protest petition. So this, I'm speaking to the zoning amendment 14. So that's, we haven't made any decisions. I come not to, not to convince you one way or another, but just to tell you what we're, what we have before us.
Okay.
So I thank you for-
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
-recognizing me and Selectman Devanza and Brian Rose and John Heikel and Barbara Griffin and Mark Warden. I know most of you, but I apologize for not knowing their street names.
Thank you so much for coming.
But we want to, we want to be good neighbors. We want to do what's best for, we have 800 employees between all of our things, all of our departments, and about half of those are part-time.
Commissioner, could you explain the change that we made in zoning to, to commercial industrial flex? Could you explain why the county went from agricultural to a year ago changing it to that commercial industrial flex?
Yes, we did, because we have an excellent executive committee and at this time, we have responsible Commissioners. And so we, we wanted to move forward and be able to, be able to use, you know, say we wanted to have a little shack to rent kayaks down by the river. That's not in the, but maybe it is, I don't know. But we wanted to be able to do things and we have no intention. And I know that the people on the executive committee are frugal. We have no intention for a high rise. And, and that can be controlled, because if we are going to sell a lease, any, any property, and we may go to selling some of the property because we will need, we need the revenue as well. We would like to, you know, keep the taxes down. But there is one- But there is one, you know, we, we have checks and balances, and the executive committee has to approve any lease or sale of property. And we had an opportunity to have a halfway house, and they made a 180 turn, and they, they voted it down, and that's in the old Cowbon. So, the, if we are to expend any money, we need to get, the delegation is the appropriating authority we suggest, and then they either take their scissors out, or they go, go along with us with the budget. But we try to work together, just like we do with Goffstown. Everything upfront. So we thank, I thank you for-
As should be. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Mr. Yatton.
Good evening, my name is Alan Yatton, I live in Goffstown. I've served on many boards. I have two observations. One is I applaud the citizens that had the four with, put this together and presented to the town. I also applaud the residents that showed up to see me, to voice their concerns and ask questions. But that should be a wake-up call for this board. You are elected to plan, and you're not doing it. You're not doing it. You are elected to lead this community in its growth through planning, and it's not happening. You need to listen to your planning director, he can help you. But it's you that have to lead. The citizens are saying, yes, we should be doing something on Mass Road, so you need to do something about Mass Road. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, form a committee. In my brainstorm, now some of you know I'm an instigator, that's okay. But if you go up and down Mass Road, my wife was born and brought up on Rochambeau Street, right behind Prenard, so I hear it all the time. If we change all the properties from Mass Road to commercial, what does it do to the tax base? That's the biggest question, and I know you don't have the answer. I'll bet it's so insignificant, you're gonna cry.
Absolutely. You're right.
You haven't done the right study. You don't have enough information to make the right decision. So that's the end of my discussion tonight. It's in your hands, ladies and gentlemen. You've been asked to do something, you've been asked questions that you have to resolve. Now do it. It's not gonna be easy, and you're gonna offend some people, and you're gonna appease others, but that's the nature of growth. Now, I just paid my tax bill, I know what it was. Do I want to see 10% on mine? No, it's about 900 bucks. So, I pay my taxes, and I have two kids in high school, so I'm not complaining, okay? I pay more in cars than I do in property taxes, automobiles and gas, think about that one, okay? So to make a great change in the commercial, we have a master plan, you need to make, you need to work on that. You already have the framework in front of you to work with, and you have the authority to do that. If you came to this town with a proposal to do some rezoning in this town, I think you'd probably have a better idea because you're gonna have done the groundwork to support it. That's all. Have fun. I am.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks, Alan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Chris.
The biggest problem with this is if this goes to commercial, it's going to be non-conforming for the residential homeowners. As it sits now, this needs to be killed and come up with a different zone, or change the zoning allowances in it. It is that cut and dry. I am 100% for a commercial use in this town, but we cannot do it at the expense of ruining the property rights of 50, 60 people on the road for a potential, whatever it is that's gonna come in a 1,200 square foot house. Either have this zone in a different manner besides commercial, or change to, in the commercial allowances to allow residential with this use, or whatever it is. We cannot take the home ownership rights against, away from people. So as it sits now, it just can't be done. Could it be done next year with some small tweaks? Sure, and then give everyone the right to vote. As it sits now, if this gets a thumbs up, you are going to ruin the lives of a lot of people, potentially ruin the lives of a lot of people on Mass Road. It's that simple, the way it sits right now.
Bruce, did you want to say something? Thank you. Scott, I'm sorry, Bruce.
That's all right, sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
He's been called worse.
Board members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am Scott Bartlett. I live at 23 Warnav here in Goffstown. I am also the town assessor. However, I am not here today as the assessor, I'm here today as a resident. I just want to speak a little bit about this, I do have some knowledge in regards to value and to, and to economics of, of property. There's two questions that I would like you to consider when you vote today, or if you vote at another time. I've heard that one of the reasons that this change has been proposed is to limit the number of high-density apartment complexes similar to the two that were constructed behind Rite Aid. I need to remind you, those two projects are in the commercial zone. They're not in the commercial-industrial flex zone, or the R2 zone, or the RSB2 zone. They are in the commercial zone, the same zone that you're looking to, or the petitioner's looking to change this to. 15 dwelling units per acre are allowed in the commercial zone as opposed to only eight in the R2 or the RSBD zone. Also, there's, the minimum lot size in the commercial zone is 5,000 square feet as opposed to 10,000 square feet in the R2 or the RSB zone. The commercial-industrial flex zone has a lot size of one acre, again, considerably larger. So my question regarding this is, if it is the intent to limit the number of high-density apartment complexes, why would we increase the commercial zone, which is the zone that allows the highest level of residential density in the town? My next question deals with simple economics, supply and demand. The principle of supply and demand states that if you increase the supply of a commodity without having a corresponding increase in the demand for that commodity, the price of that commodity will go down. Land like any other commodity is subject to the principle of supply and demand. By increasing the number of properties in the commercial zone, we would be increasing the supply of commercial land in, in Prenardville. Now let's look a little bit on the demand side. Shaw's, which is the largest tenant in Prenardville, is now vacant. Bank of America is vacant, Remax also vacant. Three of the largest Prenardville tenants are now vacant, and they have not been replaced. We also have two prime commercial lots right next to Rite Aid that still have not been developed. So this is the supply, we have a lot of supply right now. By increasing the number of, of properties, again, as I said, you're increasing the supply. What the problem is, is the demand, we need to increase the demand, not the supply. So my final question would be this, why would we want to increase the supply of commercial land at this time when our existing commercial space is not at full occupancy, and there are still commercial lots to be developed? Thank you very much, thank you for your consideration.
Is that a question, or are you looking for an answer?
I'm not looking for an answer, it's rhetorical, I'm just asking that you, when you're considering how you're gonna vote on this, ask these questions of yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
I have a comment and response.
Quick comment, please.
Quick comment, good point, well-taken. However, the supply and demand you're talking about is on huge properties. What this will do is allow smaller properties and create a larger market. That's all I have to say.
I just have a question.
There's a lady in the, in the back that has her hand up.
I wasn't going to speak, but I am, my name is Susan Demont, I own the Montessori School located on 535 Mass Road. Would you speak your last name, please? I would just like to say that having a small business and a residential, I live in the home and I have the school adjacent to the property, and I'm not sure what's gonna happen if it becomes commercial. If my taxes increase, I am not going to be able to continue having a business there. And when I go through Prenardville, I often feel as though we're missing out on a great opportunity with St. Anselms, and I'm not quite sure why we haven't connected as a community with the college in creating a college campus environment like UNH. Go through UNH, there's all kinds of little, small businesses, local people supporting each other. I don't understand why we're going to take a really nice part of our Prenardville area, which are the homes, as you come up 114 and you go in, that's a nice, everyone keeps their homes beautiful. We work hard, we get up every day, we go to work, we, we pay our taxes, and then we cross through, you know, there's shaws, again, empty facility there. Why don't we build up what we have before we start breaking down the beauty part of what we have? Let's fix up the decrepit part of Prenardville, which I believe is, I mean, there's signs there, there's, you know, it's just not attractive to go through. And what is there? Hairdressers, auto machine, auto dealerships, or car mechanics, I mean, we need those type of businesses to support our, our community. But let's think about creating a local place for people to go, community spaces. Why isn't that Remax building a community center? We must have all kinds of, of people in our community, artists, musicians, yoga teachers, we could go and do our work and also create community with each other. It's a great space, we have a nature trail. I mean, I, I just feel like, let's build and create something positive before we take away the homes that have been there and, for something that, and we have in the home, we have properties that we need to fix, we have vacant buildings we need to fill. De Angelos has been empty for how long? Two, three years? What's crawling in there? That, that's the thing, when I drive by, I think, what is living in that place? Because it's been empty for so long. And we need to focus on this part instead of tearing down homes where people live and work, and create memories. That's all I want to say.
Ms., can I just, thank you very much for your comments, they're well-taken. De Angelos, for instance, is a smaller one. A, a potential tenant went in, they talked to the owner, they named the number on the board, on the door, it's still leased to De Angelos, but De Angelos could sublet it, and the rent would be $5,000 a month. So you might, so that may have something to do why nobody's leased that spot, don't know, but I would assume so. $5,000 a month.
I, I think the question that I really would like, you know, for us to think about here is, is, is having a relationship with St. Anselms and that college community. There's a lot of families that come from different parts of the nation to visit their children, to come for parent weekends. I think we're missing an opportunity in not creating a relationship with them, they have a lot of money to, and they're building all kinds of-
Dorms.
All kinds of things there. Why don't they want to be in Prenardville? What is it?
Does it have to take that? What, come, we, we as a town, so it's only, okay, to, hang on, where the-
Chairman.
Okay, point of order, I'm sorry, point of order, let's keep this-
I just wanted to send that message, that instead of the, you know, other things, let's maybe think about how we can make a relationship with St. Anselms. There's a new person in there that's, you know, seems to be workable. At my school, I have a lot, many professors from St. Anselms. We have a relationship, and I'm always asking them, you know, why, what's wrong? What's wrong with Prenardville?
What are they saying to you?
They're not in the position to make those decisions, they would like to have community there. I mean, why don't we have community there? Does anybody know? Because I lived in New Boston for 12 years before I moved here, and there's a stigma with Prenardville, from me being, living in New Boston, there's some kind of stigma with Prenardville. And I don't know what it is, where the basis of it is, but I live there, and I work, and I wake up every day, and I pay my taxes. So I know the people in my community do the same. So let's build up, not build down.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Welch, and I live at 465 Mass Road, it's the antique shop. I came here tonight all for this, I see that there's a lot of side angles to this, but I did want to kind of mention this, the zone that I live in is a truck route. 13,000 cars pass by, it's no longer a neighborhood, it's a highway. You can't let your kids play out front, can't let your grandkids play out front anymore, and it's time, this, we were up here, what, a couple years ago, last year, doing this, it's time, I think, that the town should come up with a master plan for this stretch because obviously it's time for a change through it. I think after sitting through this meeting, that there has to be protections for the homeowners that want to stay residential, for sure, they shouldn't have problems with their mortgage, there should be a way to keep these lots with commercial use, but I don't know how you limit it, or whatever, but it's time for a change through this stretch, and it's time for the town to recognize that. And I don't know who's responsible for the planning, or whether it's zoning, or who it is, but they should have a plan to do this. Because it does affect a lot of people either way, but realistically, this stretch, 13,000 cars, it's gone from a family neighborhood to a commercial zone already. And that whole stretch, probably all up from the Manchester line to the town, should something be done, one way or another, it should be planned out, so I guess it's all up to you guys. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. It looks like there's no more public comment. We could go on to the next one, or do you want to vote on each one individually?
I say individually.
Want to vote on each one individually? I think that's a good idea. Okay, we're gonna close the public comment for this Mass Road corridor petition. Let's take a roll call on this.
Roll call?
Roll call on what?
John, John, this is just to-
We need a motion.
Well, this is just to clarify, this is what the official recommendation will be on the town ballot in March, will list this, the petition's already qualified to be on the ballot, either way.
Petition will be on the ballot.
And then below that, below the description on everybody's ballot, it'll say that the planning board recommendation was in the vote, right?
Uh, yes.
Actually, technically, it goes on, somebody will have to make a motion as to whether or not the planning board recommends-
I'll make a motion not to recommend the part.
That it goes on the ballot with the notation that the planning board does not recommend. It goes on with that type of a-
Can you make a motion in the negative? Is that to not recommend, or do you have to make a motion to recommend, and then-
My motion is to place this, have this placed on the ballot, not recommended by the planning board.
So an affirmative would be to not recommend.
An affirmative on our part.
An affirmative on our part would be not to recommend, and, and that's a, that's a valid motion, I-
I'll second it.
Okay, if you want to vote that way. Discussing on the motion. You want to speak to your motion, Phil?
This is the second time this has been here. A lot of the same discussion that we had the last time. I understand the intent of the petition, and quite frankly, if the petitioners were Mass Road residences, and the signers of the petition were here, and they said, "I own a piece of residential property on Mass Road that's in here, I signed it, I want my property zoned." zoned commercial," it would be different. I think what's important that was pointed out is 70 signatures. Out of 70 signatures, I can count on one hand and have fingers left over, how many are Mast Road that are in the area to be rezoned. That's the reason. I think, and I've said this in the past, one of the worst things for residents and property owners is to wake up one morning, pick up the newspaper, and find out that their property is going to be on the ballot to be rezoned something, and they don't have a clue about it. They don't have a clue about it. That's not right.
Who seconded that? Barbara, did you second it? Do you want to speak to your second? Okay, Brian?
Just a quick comment for you, Phil, just to consider, the way you worded, are you sure you don't want to say, because sometimes when people go to the ballot, they just look and see what the voting, what the zoning board recommends. And what will be listed on this particular article will be zoning board recommends...
Not recommended.
Not recommended, but it'll be in a... Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just going to leave it alone.
The options we have, on the ballot, it'll say one of two things, recommended by the planning board in the vote, or not recommended by the planning board in the vote. And my motion is for it to go on the ballot, to be printed on the ballot, not recommended by the planning board.
Okay, just to be clear, thank you.
Right, and I believe, so if this were to pass, it would have not recommend and the vote number. If this, if his vote were to fail, then somebody could bring forward a new motion.
Right.
Okay.
Because the motion failed, because his motion is technically to place the planning board recommendation on the warrant article as not recommended.
Right.
So if it fails, then it doesn't go on and somebody else can make, it does make it, I know what we're sort of driving at, you have a negative, so is the affirmative the negative when people look at it?
Double negative, right.
Yeah.
But it actually gets more confusing the other way.
Okay.
It's consistent with...
On news, though.
It's consistent with all the ballots...
I mean, historically, it's confusing anyways.
That will be voted on by the voters. It'll be consistent with the warrant articles. It'll be consistent with the school articles. They either say recommended by planning board, recommended by the budget committee, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, recommended by the school board, or not recommended. It might, you might have an article that says recommended by the, by the Board of Selectmen, not recommended by the budget committee.
Thank you for explaining that.
Don?
I, I also commend the people who came forward to get this warrant article on the ballot. I agree, though, that for the individual property owner, in order to have that protection of having its state residential and commercial, so that they don't have issues with refinancing, as much as I want commercial to come to Goffstown, as much as I think the Mast Road corridor is the place for it, I believe individual property rights trump all things. So either we protect those who don't want to move forward with this, or we stay where we are.
I agree, it's just, it's the specific wording of the article that I have the issue with, and I'm too scared of the non-conforming implications of it, of what could happen to the property owners.
Mark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to say that it's great to see this many people out, although it's still a relatively small number that spoke compared to the overall number of property owners and voters in Goffstown. So I'm inclined to vote against the motion, just so it can get to the ballot, but I see it's a, it's probably going to lose anyway, so I'm really sort of falling on a sword here.
Don't do that, we have 15 more to go.
I was trying to get out here early, Barbara. So that's it, I wanted, you know, give the voters a, I'm glad that at least it qualifies so voters can have their say in March.
And I think that, and I really want to commend the people and thank them for coming out this evening.
Can I actually say something?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that this article, and we're all appreciative of work going through putting petitions together, making sure you have the right wording, getting the signatures, I think we're all very appreciative of that, but it does present, I think, to us as board members, an interesting conundrum. We heard more than one person comment on the need for a plan. You might recall, we spent a few hours in public hearings and in meetings this past year talking about a plan for Pernardville. And originally, it included St. Anselms College. And the committee, John, that you were on, and my recollection actually was at the beginning of that process, you were for it, but maybe I'm mistaken, St. Anselms was actually taken out at one point from it because of the public reaction to the plan. And ultimately, people came to the plan saying, "You're changing things and you haven't asked me about the change." And we have petition warrant articles, which by statute allow people to change other people's property rights without asking them about the change. So I just invite all of the board members for the rest of this term and the board members for our next year to consider the issue when you are charged with planning. And the individual property rights come up trumping planning, because how do you do both if you really want to plan? So I think this article highlights the issue very nicely, frankly. And that's all I'll say on that.
Thank you, Barbara. And I think if the next planning board, there'll be an election in March, whoever that planning board is, I hope that they decide to get together with the residents of Pernardville and somehow come up with a plan that works well for the residents as well as the, as well as the future growth of Goffstown, which is certainly probably not going to be less than it is today, we hope. And I think, and I, but I do agree, this, as much as I really like this plan, I think that we need to protect all involved here. But I do agree that Mast Road corridor is the place that this would be best suited. I just don't want to damage any of the property owners, the homeowners there, and I don't want to, I don't want to damage their property in any way to refinance or sell or anything. So with that being said, I think we've all heard from the public, we're ready to take a vote on this, and this vote is to not recommend to the public, to the voters, on the warrant, on the March ballot. But I do think that we need a serious plan in Pernardville to fix the issues that we have and to somehow try to combat these increased property taxes that we are all going to see next year on your tax bill. Hopefully not, but I'm afraid they're going to.
It's going to be a problem. Not a zoning problem.
Exactly.
All in favor of, all in favor of not recommending this plan to, all in favor of not recommending this plan on the ballot? Say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? We have seven to zero, not to recommend. Next.
One down. 14 to go.
Thank you very much for attending.
I would strongly encourage everyone to speak with yourselves, family, friends, anything for ideas, for demand. It is the truest thing. You cannot have homeowners buying homes, businesses buying businesses without a demand to come here. There has to be a reason. And a house like mine and everyone else's, it's 2,000 square feet and $7,000 in taxes, is not the demand. There has to be a reason, a green space, a nice coffee shop, a restaurant, whatever it is, it's a combination.
Well, let's take a two-minute break.
We need to plan together, so please come back, everyone.
Boy, we're going to take a two-minute break. Thank you very much, Chris. Or anybody that needed to take a break.
Members, we're all back. Okay, uh, thank you. That was, uh, that was wonderful. We're gonna move on here with another, um, petition warrant article for the ballot. This one is a petition, uh...
Amendment number fifteen.
Amendment number fifteen. I'm looking for the number on that, I'm sorry.
You want me to read it?
Yes, please.
The, uh, language is, "Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number fifteen as proposed by petition by registered voters of the town of Goffstown to amend the zoning ordinance as follows, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning district by changing the zoning of twelve Joffrey Street, in parentheses, map eighteen lot twenty-seven, from residential two to residential small business office two?"
That's the one. Thank you. Yes, would the petitioner, uh, Dana Benner, please speak to this one?
Dana Benner, twelve Joffrey Street. Uh, I promise to keep this short and sweet. Um, what we're trying to do is set it up so, right now, I'm, I teach college. And what I'm trying to do is leave the door open that I can open a small business if I wanted to, whether it be tutoring or, or doing something. So, right now, we're, it's just gonna be residential. But we want it zoned so when that day comes, that I can go before the boards and with, with a business proposal, but the zoning thing would be all set up and squared away. So, that would, that would already be set up. That's all we're trying to do, is just make a, a smooth transition if and when that day comes.
Mr. Chair, if you mind?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
In a dream world, let's say you could do it tomorrow, what would be your goal?
I'd actually continue on with my teaching, because I teach college on the college level. But I would also tutor, whether it be high school or college students in my field of study.
So have people come over to tutor anyone that needs help in a certain subject?
Right, right. They'd hire me and they'd come over and it, that would be the spot, you know, to, to do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
As a residential, you couldn't have a tutoring business in your home?
You could.
You could?
Yes.
If it's our...
Home occupation is allowed.
So, what could be there if it was RSBO two?
In the ordinance, I mean, it lists the different types of uses that are allowed in that zone. I don't, I mean, I can open it and go through each of them, but it's a small...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Phil.
To answer the question, one of the main issues that you have is signage.
Okay.
RSBOD law allows large signage. Home occupation only allows two square foot.
Gotcha.
Question for the petitioner?
Cover.
It's allowed. Um, just sort of in line with the, the first one and, and notice to people, um, I noticed that there are signatures for people on other streets and you have a, you have two other people on your street that signed the petition. Did you, were you able to go to every house on your street? Because we got a couple of letters, I don't know if you're aware of it, from people who live on your street. And it doesn't indicate that, they don't appear to be in favor. Did you?
Well, my wife went to everybody up on that street.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Now, whether she talked to him actually or not is beyond me, but she knocked on every single door.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Phil?
We have a couple of letters that need to be read into the record.
We're, uh...
Barbara just mentioned them.
We do have a couple of letters, um, to the record. Um, "Dear Planning Board Members, I reside at twenty-five Joffrey Street. I'm against amendment fifteen, which states to see the town will vote to amend the zoning district by changing the zoning of twelve Joffrey Street from residential to R two, small business office. The Benners were a couple speaking loudly to various boards during the Plan for Notable Consideration period. They do not want the zoning change in Pinnardville. In fact, they circulated a petition against changing any zoning. I believe it is, uh, it said no zoning changes as one of three concerns, uh, on that petition, which was submitted to Brian Rose. Our street is a quiet, low-traffic zone with many little children residing in these homes. As a matter of fact, the homes across from and beside the Benners all have little children. The traffic that is created by having the car wash is enough, causing jams in the light when the car wash is busy. Having a little business on the street will make it more difficult to walk safely as cars will be parked in the street. The Benner's property, uh, property is small and could not accommodate the parking lot. Their driveway is close to their neighbor's property line as it is. For a couple who spoke so often and clearly about not wanting zoning changes in the neighborhood, it seems to me they are contradicting all that they previously fought for by seeking to get their property rezoned to business. I can only assume that they want to do this for personal and financial gain and never mind the rest of us on the street. I was never, ever approached by the Benners about this rezoning issue to sign any petition. To the best of my understanding, only two people on Joffrey Street actually signed it. Uh, it, uh, in all my talks with neighbors during Plan for Notable, everyone to maintain the road as a quiet residential dead end. Please vote no on this amendment. Sincerely, Nancy Lamper, twenty-five Joffrey Street." Read the second one, or, you know, okay, I'll read this. I go into the record. "Dear Planning Board, I'm a resident of Joffrey Street in Pinnardville. I wish to speak on amendment fifteen submitted to residents of twelve Joffrey Street, but I'm unable to attend the meeting due to my, uh, no mode of transportation at this time. It reads as follows, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning district by changing the zoning of twelve Joffrey Street, map eighteen lots twenty-seven, from residential two R two to residential small business office two RSBO dash two. As stated to me by the residents, they wish to have the zoning changed as they believe that will allow them to sell their property at a higher price in the future. This is purely self-serving and does not take any character of the neighborhood into consideration. Joffrey Street is a dead end with many young children residing in the homes on both sides of the street, including homes surrounding the property in question. Increased traffic is something we all fought against during Plan for Notable when the opening of the dead end was under consideration. The residents, Gaetaine and Dana Benner of twelve Joffrey Street, were very vocal about keeping our street the quiet residential neighborhood it currently is. It seems to me they are being hypocritical, hypocritical, uh, and now wanting their lot to be changed to a business zone. Please note that this, uh, that only two residents of Joffrey Street besides the Benners themselves signed the petition. I'm all, I'm asking you to vote no, not recommend this zoning change, but the majority of members on the street, as evidenced by the past petitions signed by all of us, want the street to remain quietly residential. One couple attempting to advance their situation should not take precedence over the desires of their neighbors. From a general perspective, supporting spot zoning such as this will set a precedent that can result in many future residents taking, uh, this route, creating a confusion of zoning throughout the town. This will defeat the purpose of zoning districts for the good of the community on the whole. Sincerely, Cheryl Anderson, twenty-nine Joffrey Street." Those are the old, those are the two letters, the only two letters that we have.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
You may, Chris.
With your goal being to have, um, a, a small tutoring, uh, for people and understanding that your zoning, as it stands now, would allow for that, and really the only difference is the, the size of a sign, would you be okay just keeping it as it is since you could have your tutoring, you know, five people over to tutor now?
Yeah, that, that would, you know, satisfy everybody, but the thing is, that right across the street from us, Mr. Larrabee had a washing machine business and his, he had it the exact same zone as that we're going for. There was no traffic going in there. There's not gonna be any large amount of traffic going in with what I wanna do. I mean, what, if I wanted to, whether it goes from tutoring, or maybe I wanted to open up a woodworking shop or something in a shed and getting all the proper stuff in the yard and stuff, I want that availability because right now, I'm looking to my, to my future. I don't plan on moving. I plan on staying right there. But I, I'm looking to the future of myself and my wife. And if, I want the, I want the availability of being able to be self-employed and run a small business if I so desire.
And the reason I'm asking, and I'm looking at the zoning, uh, guidelines, everything that you can do under R two, you can do under RBO for the most part, for what you're talking about, something small, no traffic, you know, very little traffic, someone shows up to buy something, someone shows up for a course. It seems like you can do everything as you sit right now.
But don't you need a variance in that, to, to do that stuff? I think that's what we, that's why we went with this way, because if, as it stands now, you'd have to have variances. So if you have it zoned this way now, you don't have to go through that variance issue.
It depends on the type of business.
Yeah, it depends on the type of business.
Okay, okay.
From what you're saying, your goal is for your business, it would really be no different.
What your goals, you know, you know as well as I do that what starts off one way now could, could grow a little bit, not, not immensely, but now change the whole dynamics of the whole thing. So, just to put things into place, just in case things like that happen. It's, it's a safeguard for us, is what it is. So, I'm not doing something wrong and getting caught by, saying, hey, you know, you shouldn't have done that. Well, okay, I thought I was all set.
No, I'm literally asking just to accomplish your goals and honestly, your neighbors.
Sure, sure. I appreciate that.
Okay, those are my questions.
Y'all set with me? You look, Mark, you look up, I ready to say something.
Just remind us what your butters are. One of your butters is commercially zoned right now.
Right, right now, there's a butter that's a, that's commercial and is, and it's being, the house is Leon lived in as residential.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the house that butts right up against, um, Mr. Paris's lot. And then, and then, and then Mr. Paris's lot swings up around and it butts up against ours from behind.
I've got it on the screen behind us for anybody who wants to...
Yeah, there's a, there's a little strip there.
Where T is from Joffrey Street, that's their property.
Yeah.
This property directly towards Master, this is Master Road here.
Yeah.
Directly adjacent to them, uh, on the north is commercially zoned. And then also just a small bit right behind, I think that's partly owned, that's part of what Paris owns.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
That small lot.
It used to be residential.
The overall Paris lot.
See, that little strip used to be residential. But obviously, it's not big enough to park a car on. So, he bought that strip and it absorbed it into his commercial, but now, so now he butts us, so we're now basically butted up onto that corner and on that side.
Okay. Thank you.
And across the street is residential.
And directly across the street used to be zoned what we're going for. And that was, he used to have a, uh, machine laundry, uh, vacuum, you know, he repaired small appliances.
Just for clarification again, Brian, point out the lot, the zoning, and the color is, the zoning for what now?
So, this lot is the lot in question. It's zoned residential two.
Yeah.
All of the lots on the surrounding, the, the same color of that is residential two.
Okay.
And then directly north, which is on the bottom of this, is zoned commercial. And this little lot that's kind of on the west side, I guess, is also zoned commercial.
What's that orange color on the next?
This one over here is the RSBO two.
Which is what he's asking for.
That's what he's asking. So, it actually kind of would look somewhat similar where you have commercial and then an RSBO two little lot like that.
Is it buffer?
Well, it wouldn't really be similar because if you look at the surrounding property that you have...
This is all commercial adjacent to it. I mean, it's, it's different, but you get the same idea where you're, you have a commercial and then you bump it up into RSBO two.
There's no commercial. Don't use the term commercial.
Down, down below.
Down below, the pink, okay. Pink is, the pink is...
Right.
Pink, okay. I thought you were pointing at the yellow. All right.
You through with me? I am free to go.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other comments? I think we're gonna close the public hearing at this point for this one. Uh, board discussions?
I'm just, I, I understand what they're asking for, but I need to tell you, there is spot zoning going on there. And I think the, the public comment received in regards to the fact that these are people who were, the applicant and the petitioner were very vocal about no zoning changes in Pinnardville. I, I mean, that's on the record in numerous locations, and I appreciate their, their interest in their property, but I do hear the individual property owners on the street who rights need to be considered. Um, and in light of not sort of a plan for the area, I, I think it is a little bit of spot zoning. I, I probably, I think I have a problem with it. So, that's my comment on it. Especially in light of the fact that the proposed uses can all be done, given the current, um, zoning of the property. So...
I can just tell you from experience, folks, that, you know, I, I worked for eleven years at my, my shop. It's right, it's two buildings from, uh, that property. I know it very well. Um, I also know that the house out behind me is zoned commercial. People do live in it, um, which seems to work out fine for them. Um, and what was expressed to me is the, the thought that Paris, my landlord, and that house out behind me may sell their property at some time, join them together and have a large commercial property. The, that would leave the Benners no buffer. This is, this is how I, this is how, my understanding of it. And being there every day, I certainly appreciate it. Leaving them no buffer from between that commercial to their residential. And in being able to have that buffer of an RSBOD, and I agree with you, Barbara, I don't support spot zoning. I agree with you. I understand why. However, in this particular case, they're concerned that, that the two commercial lots, uh, the two large ones of which I rent from, uh, if the owner ever decided to sell and they tie those two together, they have a house sitting right next to a commercial lot. And this RSBOD zone would be a buffer for them and their neighbors. So, so they're not sitting right up against something because that, those two, two pieces of land combined are about an acre. And we know an acre can be a substantial, um, size of business with a large parking lot.
The parcels you talk about, commercial, are the, the two, uh, between Patane Street and Joffrey there, those?
Yes.
So, the concern is if somewhere down the future, if those lots are combined?
Yes.
And the lot that...
There's three lots there, but two of them, two front ones are Paris.
Right, right.
And a back little one. And that square is the house behind Paris's body shop.
Right. I, I, I understand what you're saying. You're making an excellent point. Because that large lot that's behind the lot in question that the petition is talking about, the one up at same street right there is gonna be under the same situation. So, that lot should also be RSBOD. See? Then that wouldn't be spot zoning. But the issue is, this is a what-if. It isn't today. It isn't today. A what if is down the road. This is all for what is down the road. The uses that are allowed on the home occupation fit every single thing. And at this point, if that was RSBOD, just that one, the other one should be. The difference, RSBOD allows a six-foot square sign, where home occupation is a one-by-two sign. So you have that, coming down that street, onto that residential street, you have the ability to have that big square, five, six square foot sign.
And weren't these streets all in the plan, Pernardville, that there were public hearings and everybody, pretty much everybody who lived on the streets came in and said, no change?
Yes.
Well, they didn't want them opened up from dead ends.
They didn't want them opened up so you could pass between one from another.
All right.
But so a sensible thing to do, maybe, to talk to that neighbor behind them for a future, because I don't think anything's in the plans right now that is threatening their property.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're dealing with what ifs. Are you dealing with what ifs? You could talk, you could do what ifs with every single property, residential property that butts commercial property. And then zone all the properties that are but, commercial properties, RSBOD, to be the buffer between the residential and commercial. But one particular lot is spot zoning.
I appreciate, I understand that, right? I think, but the only threat is that you've got, that you've got a one-acre piece of major commercial property sitting in that front square that takes.
Well, look at over Patane Street.
Right, that actually goes, I think that one actually goes through the condo. I mean, on condo, behind.
Right, well, what about those properties on the other side of Patane Street? Shouldn't those all be RSBOD?
I guess someday there's a line drawn and this side of that line is one and this side of that line is the other. And it's a tough decision, Phil, that's why you're elected, to make those choices.
Absolutely, and that's why I point out the things that I do.
We appreciate that.
My question is, since we're talking about what ifs and what Mr. Paris wants to do with his property and if he actually did take the residential house that's being used as residential and.
He wouldn't, but he might combine it with the person that does own that.
Okay.
But he just bought it also, just for fairness. He just closed on that with his dad.
But if we voted no on this tonight, there's nothing to stop the Benners from coming back and act, like, let's say that commercial venture does happen, they could come back and ask for ours. And they might even have their business started up by then where they might want bigger signage that would, it would make more sense, at least in my mind.
Except, yes, I think that's correct, except if it's permitted, if it's a permitted use, there'll be less, there'll be less public hearing, how would you say that? If there was, if it was a permitted use of, in an RSBO district as opposed to a residential, it's easy to do what you want to do if the use is permitted.
If it's already zoned, okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
And it just increases property owner's rights. I mean, you're paying for that footprint. We've closed public comment, I'm very sorry. Any motions?
I'll make a motion not to recommend.
Seconded.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Brian, to not recommend. Speak on your motion.
Seconded.
Let's take a vote. All in favor of putting it on the ballot as not recommending petition 140311-003, Article 15, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Did I hear?
I'm going to abstain because I am slightly confused on this one with the goals and the protections of the future, so I'm just going to abstain. I feel like there's two different things trying to go on here.
Well, the reality is for the board, it doesn't matter. Your zoning change is a zoning change and applicants can come in and say, this is what I'm going to do with the property, and it doesn't matter what they say. And I'm not saying anybody's saying anything that they're not going to do, but I'm just saying from our standpoint, a zoning change is a zoning change, period. And the zoning is either as it is or as it's proposed to be. And the discussion about other people's lots who aren't a party to this zoning article that aren't here, that have no applications, you know, if you had an application in front of the board for something on another lot, the reality is that discussion might become applicable or germane, but the reality is this is a request to rezone a lot, period. And I appreciate the confusion because there were a lot of what ifs they do, but the reality is.
And from my understanding, with a goal of having a small business, whether it's a tutor or woodshop or whatever it is, awesome, more power to you, please do. And I don't think anyone's going to have any problem with that. So I think that no matter what happens, that you'll be able to have your goals met. More power to you if you can have a small something in your house.
So what was.
And as it is now, will work.
It was 3-3 with an abstention.
With an abstention.
So motion, 3-3, one, motion fails. To suggest, just a clarification, we don't believe, I don't believe, according to all the other speaking that went on previously, that this would affect a bank's ability to loan on that property because it is still residential. It's staying residential. I know that was your concern with the previous.
Residential is allowed use.
Residential isn't allowed use.
That's the difference.
And so is RSBOD, and that's the.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, no, no, that would.
No, I get it, but this is staying residential.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So this won't affect.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I have no issues about bank lending on their property.
Once it's rezoned to RSBOD, they could go into the planning board, where to plan, and they can convert that piece of property, offices, anything that's allowed, a permitted use in that zone, residential, small office and business.
Antique shop, I mean, that's further down the road.
As long as they live, while they live there.
No, you don't have to live there. Not a RSBOD. You can convert it to a store down below with three apartments upstairs and not live there. It's allowed. And you have a six-square foot sign outside. What's its own to that? You're allowed to, you go pull a permit for whatever's allowed use, whatever's a permitted use. Residential, you can operate a small business. You can operate under a home occupation.
But my occupation isn't permitted.
Whose occupation are we talking about, John?
Well, he said you could operate.
I didn't mean it as you, John.
Oh, okay, okay. Because my occupation isn't permitted.
The property owner.
I may be confused, but I don't think the Benners were opening it at mechanic.
I don't, I understand that, but he said you can operate.
When I say you, I'm saying you, meaning the property owner.
As in use.
No, the, I.
Okay.
The property owner.
Got it, okay. Sorry, Phil.
And I definitely had no issues with the bank, you know, lending on it. There's definitely nothing with residential business owner.
Do we have another motion for that? That first one failed. We can't amend anything, so we could give a motion.
I'll move to recommend that the board has a positive recommendation on this petition.
Motion from Mark? To recommend a positive recommendation for the ballot. We have a second. I will second that. Do you want to speak to your motion, Mark?
Question, if this also fails, then is, the third option is to say no recommendation? Would that show up on the ballot as such? I think so.
No recommendation? If it fails three times?
I don't know for sure.
Well, if this, if this positive, see, I don't know what's allowed on the ballot.
I don't know what happens on that one.
I'm not entirely sure on that.
I'm not sure.
Is John still here? She might know.
I think you really should batter it out until you come to a conclusion of a 4-3 vote or a, you know, a vote that passes. That way it shows as recommended or not recommended.
I'm not sure. I don't know what the town election requirements are or what their rules are. It may say that without recommendation is the third option. I don't know who the expert is in that.
We're going to find out.
Maybe. Well, you have a motion and a second on the floor, as it is, maybe it'll pass and solve the issue.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara, you're looking into whether there's a third option?
No, and I have the Land use regulation book with the statutes in it, so I'm trying to see if there's anything in this that might give us the answer. But I'm a little concerned that it probably won't because it's going to be under some.
I don't worry, the election.
Maybe, I tried warrant, it wasn't there.
I do.
Yeah.
Let me try.
Can I ask then, like, my confusion was, I thought we were voting so they could have their house zoned so we could open up a small business down the road. And then when you were talking about Mr. Paris may combine two lots.
Mr. Paris may not combine two lots.
Mr. Paris actually shouldn't have been a topic of discussion at all.
Okay, that.
We allowed it, so they went.
Well, he should be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then that the two lots abutting and that are existing commercial, that if they got combined and became eligible for a larger commercial unit, then having this being RSBO2, then that's going to act as a buffer. And I don't understand that if the whole thing is just if he can have his house zoned to two to five kids at night, what does it matter if it's a buffer or not? Isn't it still concerned with his house, whether he can sell something out of his house or not? That's where my confusion.
You can still sell out of a home occupation.
I know, I know. So that, I mean, that's my whole thing, is as it is now, anything that he wants to do, whether it's open up a screen, you know, sell some T-shirts out of there, selling on a small, I don't know, anything, make coffee cups, whatever it is, something small, can do as it is. So I don't understand that there's one, as far as I'm looking at it, there's one thing between the different businesses that are allowed between residential, as it sits now, or residential business owner. But then I don't, and I understand the difference between that, I don't understand the argument for if this is zoned as RSBO2, the buffer that you were talking about and how that could protect him as a buffer. I'm not understanding the buffering part. It's going to be next to a commercial, no matter what it is, and it's still going to have any bearing on what he sells out of his house.
It's not really a buffer.
Because he's the buffer.
Right.
To the next person.
He's the buffer to the next person.
But so what? The goal is that I can teach kids in my house, not that I'm buffering someone else's lot, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If that's the sole use of his, that he has.
So unless, so as far as I can see it, if the sole goal is to have a small business to supplement my income, retirement income, whatever it is, he can do whatever he wants to do right now. And, you know, and to, I can't see any concern with anyone of a variance to come before and say, instead of teaching kids, I want to, whatever it is, you know.
Looking at the zoning designation charts here and the principal uses and what's allowed, most of them are the same.
Exactly.
Between residential one and RSBO2, here are a couple of examples of where they differ. For example, yard and garage sales are permitted uses, they're permitted in R1, but not allowed at all in RSBO2.
And that's what I'm saying, the ones that.
And here's another, accessory attached dwelling unit is a special exception in R1, but it's conditional use in RSBO2.
Right.
Kind of a minor difference.
So the ones that are special exception, that where they differ have no resemblance whatsoever to his goal of his house and running a business out of there, that everything he wants to do now, as much as that could morph into something else, is still going to be allowed under residential two and RSBO2.
The way he explained it, yes.
Right. So I would say to help him and move this along and have his goals met, his neighbors met, he's going to be able to do whatever he wants to do now. If those change into something, that is one of the three exceptions on there, he can come back and ask for that exception.
Awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, let's take a vote. We have a motion on the table to recommend in the affirmative?
Recommend change.
To recommend a change residential to RSBO2 with a yes recommendation on ballot. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
4-3, motion fails.
Motion fails.
You guys want to go back to the first motion?
Mr. Chair, yeah, do you want to count that as a passing? We can't count that as a passing motion, right?
Right.
So do we have a third option?
Well, we don't go by Robert's rules. I'm going to make the first motion again.
Yeah, if you're going to vote the same way, then make another motion to not recommend it.
I vote to not recommend changing from R2 to RSBO2.
I'll second it.
To not recommend. Say that's the same as the first one.
And a second.
Any discussion on that motion? Discuss it, discuss it.
My only thing is that I believe that we're meeting the person's, what they asked us to do, what his goals are. If it were different, please let me know and I can re, you know, think it, but from everything I've been told, that's going to let them do whatever they want to do in the house. If it's something different, I'm totally open to it. I want to, I don't know, make little pointed hats with birds coming out of them, let me know, go for it, I don't, I don't care.
You don't want to talk about hats.
No, sorry, I don't want to bring up chickens or hats, but as I understand it.
All in favor of the motion to not recommend on the ballot?
Aye.
Yes. All opposed? Aye.
4-3.
So that's 4-3, not to recommend on the ballot.
And that's what we'll put on the ballot?
Yes, not to recommend, that'd be 4-3.
Okay, let's move on.
Not to recommend. Okay, next. Und signed. Petition of amendment to zoning ordinance to the selectmen of Goffstown, Hampshire. Und signed legal voters, the town requests that the zoning ordinance of town be amended by adding the following provisions and deleting any provisions inconsistent with, are you in favor of this amendment?
Chair?
Yeah, that's not.
You want to do the third petition article, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I can read that for you.
Where is that on?
So the, this is, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number 16 as proposed by petition by registered voters of the town of Goffstown to amend the zoning ordinance as follows? To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning district by changing the zoning of 75 Daniel Plummer Road, map 16, lot 21-2, from residential two to commercial.
That one has a letter to address. This is addressed to me. John Heikel, Chairman, 16 Main Street, Goffstown, Hampshire. Dear John, I have submitted the petition to amend the zoning on properly located 75 Daniel Plummer Road for residential two to commercial. At this time, I respectfully request that you please recuse yourself from voting on this proposed amendment. My reason for this official request is that you have a conflict of interest in this particular case. In the past, you have had a very public involvement in the interest of my property. I am requesting this in advance of the public hearing on the petitions for proposed zoning changes on January 9, 2014. This allows time for the planning board to choose an alternate solution. A copy of this letter was also sent to Brian Rose, Planning and Zoning Administrator, and Susan DeRusso, Town Administrator. Sincerely, Roxanne Hunt, 75 Daniel Plummer Road, Goffstown, Hampshire. Sincerely, Roxanne Hunt, seventy-five Daniel Plummer Road, Goffstown, Hampshire. Okay. Any public comment? Well, do we have the petitioner here this evening? Kathy LeBlank. The petitioner is not here this evening.
Take her picture, it's Roxanne.
Roxanne's petitioner.
She's the one who wrote the letter, saying she submitted the petition. We presume it's the first person on the...
We presume it's the first person.
But it's not always.
No, no.
Okay, we presume it's the first one. So, that one is not, okay. We'll hear from the petitioner.
Good evening. At this time, you just read the letter, and on the advice of my lawyer, I will officially request that you accuse yourself because of the reasons that are stated in the letter. There's been litigation between you and I, and it's clearly a conflict of interest, there's a lot of animosity, and I'm not comfortable with being in front of you or in answering any of your questions, and I won't speak on, I won't speak any further unless you recuse yourself.
Okay, that's your choice.
Thank you.
That was also your choice, John.
My choice, my choice, I already cleared that with the town attorney as well.
I'm sure you did, John, and as in the rules, it is up to your discretion, and I have to say, I'm sorry that I am not gonna get to hear the petitioner as to why she wanted this change, because of your insistence to vote and be a part of this, and I understand...
I don't have an insistence to vote, I have an insistence to maintain, be a member of this board, as I was voted to be. And, right? You understand my position here?
That, I understand your position.
Unfortunately, we won't hear the petitioner's reason why.
It's also unfortunate for all the voters of Goffstown that they won't hear either.
Because it is on the record that there is some fairly protracted litigation in regards to this lot that the two of you were involved in, and I don't, there's no reason to say any more than what was already said.
Yeah, no more needed to be said. I disclosed all that to Attorney Dresser, and, and he advised me, and we take Attorney Dresser's advice all the time, and he's advised me today exactly what I can and cannot do.
And I'd like also to say for the record, though, that the Board of Selectment has adopted a code of conduct. That code of conduct is issued to every elected official and appointed official upon their swearing-in. And any resident that would like to see that code of conduct, it's available on the website, that every elected official and appointed official that represents you has been requested to abide by that by the Board of Select.
Is there any public, any more, any other public comment on that issue? I'll close the public comment. Unfortunately, we don't have a discussion, unless you'd like to discuss this.
No, you're entertaining motions?
I'm entertaining motions.
I move that the planning board recommend the zoning change.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion for Mark, seconded from Phil.
I second it, so that we could have the discussion. And what I'd like to hear from the planner, Brian Rose, an explanation, not only for us, not only for the people that are here in attendance, but everybody on that can see where the property is located and what the abutting properties are, so we all have an idea of what we're dealing with.
Excellent. Can we hear from Brian Rose?
I'm just zooming into the property on the map here, so you can all see it. So, this is Daniel Plummer Road. There are a whole lot of apartments here, and I can't recall the name of the complex that's there, but...
Country Squires.
Country Squires. The property in question is directly adjacent to Country Squires, right here where my mouse is circling. And it, so, Country Squires is zoned commercial. The applicant has requested, the petitioner, excuse me, has requested to zone her property to commercial. And so, that would be just an extension of the commercial zone in that area. Directly across the street is, is all zoned industrial.
There's Gold's Gym over there.
Yes.
Gold's Gym, Gold's Gym is on that side. I don't, I don't believe it's...
Right in the corner there, right? Corner of La May.
Right there.
Okay. So, Gold's Gym is in there, there's some manufacturing in there across the street, several industrial buildings between Lamy and Cody Drive, Cody Ave. So, you know, this changing to commercial probably wouldn't be outside the realm of acceptance within that area, because it's already got a good deal of commercially zoned property there and industrial zoned property. Adjacent to them is one house, and then next to that is the Jehovah Witnesses. Those are in, in the residential two zone. However, obviously, the Jehovah Witnesses building, the Kingdom Hall, is, is obviously not a residential use. So, the point could be argued that, you know, there, there are businesses along that corridor that, you know, would also fit into this area. So, if, if you ask me as a staff person, I would recommend that the board recommend this. I don't see a, a problem with changing that property to commercial. I, I don't believe it's a spot zone, as, as some of the other ones may have been. So, that's my recommendation.
You, oh, okay. Any, any comments from the board?
Just a question, I don't see any. Did we get any written submissions on this for or against it?
No, there were none.
And were the abutters notified?
We, we generally typically have, in, in any of these petition rezones, we've done the letters as a courtesy, they're not required by statute.
Yep, no, I'm aware.
And we do them generally only to the property owners.
Well, I just noticed that there were a lot of people from Daniel Plummer Road who signed this, but I don't know the numbering system, so I don't know, okay.
If the board wants me to, on the next go-around, I would, I think it's actually a good idea to maybe go ahead and notify the abutting properties of the rezones too, because, you know, they might have something to say as well. I'd be happy to take that direction from the board, so...
All right.
Could you define spot zoning? Could we discuss that with the last one? That was a problem. Could you define spot zoning for me?
Well, I think it's an issue of zoning in general, and, and spot zoning generally has trouble from a legal standpoint and from an enforcement standpoint, spot zoning, and it's why people have plans or master plans to incorporate, so that areas are signaled both to the public that goes through them and the public that may have an interest in them, understands what the rights or what the occupation of those things might be. And if spot zoning is such for use that bears no relation to anything around it, or is not done in accordance with a plan, there can be some issues with the zoning, and I'm sure that Phil can expand upon it, but it's one of the reasons that they talk about the importance of a master plan or having a plan, because for zoning, when zoning is adopted in accordance with plans that are voted on, they stick. Whereas, when you just pick lots that have no relation to what's going on around them or a plan, people can argue that you've interfered with their property rights under different venues. So, that's why it's important to have plans, that's why it's important to have zoning, just both for the individuals who are there and the individuals who pass through it and the individuals who observe it. Phil, you probably have something that you could add to it with your years of experience?
Well, the only thing that I could add to that is, for example, if you had, all those properties were residential, and somebody wanted to rezone one piece of property commercial, and when you looked at it, there's, the uses are all residential, and all of a sudden, you're gonna have one right in the middle, and the question to ask is, why is it commercial?
I'll show you a really good example of a spot zone. If you look on the, on the screen, right here, it's surrounded by residential, and there's one piece of commercial zoning. That's a Panardville Athletic Club.
I wonder if that had a lot of opposition when it was rezoned?
I don't know how it got zoned that way. I wasn't here at the time or when.
Or when, or when.
That may have gotten, that may have been...
Sounds like something I would have voted for.
It may have been, it may have been.
You guys have built a road remembers.
Brian, could you tell us if the, the, this is Country Squire, and that's zoned commercial? Could you tell us the other condominium on Mast Road?
Timberwood?
Timberwood. Could you tell us what that is zoned?
Residential two.
Residential two.
Yep, right there.
Country Squire is post-two thousand, I mean nineteen sixty-one zoning time, I think it was.
Who, Country Squire?
Country Squire is relatively new.
Right.
So, it was part of the zoning. Could you explain to us why that is commercial and, and there's a residential use? And could you also explain to us why, why Timberwood is R2?
That's gonna be difficult for Brian, and I'll tell you why. It depends on when the applications came into the planning board, and what the zones were at the time, so you have to go and pull the applications to find out the date, then you have to go and look at the zoning ordinance that was in effect that year, to see what was the allowed uses, and that could be, that'll tell you why.
It's, it's very subjective, I guess, why a property is zoned one way or another. It could, there could be a lot of reasons why. What you end up dealing with, though, is whatever the property is zoned, when you wanna do something with it, you have to figure out what the current, what the correct process is to get that. So, if you have a commercially zoned property and you wanna do a bunch of condos, but it's not allowed, then you have to go for a variance. But if it is allowed, then you just go to the planning board and get a site plan approval, and then you're done. And you go build it. So, it really just depends, and there are a lot of scenarios and a lot of different ways to get to the same thing, just like the previous thing where, you know, they wanted to get a RSBO two, but you could also do it through a home occupation, where you, and, you know, you could get a variance or something if you wanna go to a, a different use. So, I don't know if that explained the question, answered the question, but...
I'm not gonna mention that the petitioner's name isn't even on the signature pages, but that's something, that's something else to, to even think about.
Well, I'm glad you didn't mention it, but we did mention already that just because, your position is just because a petition was signed by a board member didn't mean that they were for or against it, so...
Correct, but normally the petitioner would have the name on it. And I also, Brian, I also noticed that, you know, you did send this letter, I received this at my house, from the planning board stating RSA six seventy-five colon five, with a copy of the statute. Did you...
Not regarding this application.
Not regarding, no, to the Mast Road, to the, I received this one because I'm on Mast Road, I assume. Did you mail out this package with this zoning ordinance, I mean, with this six seventy-five colon five statute, and the explanation, and this letter to the abutters of this property?
Not to the abutters, I already, I already mentioned, we don't generally mail to the abutters, but we mail a letter to the property owner in question that notifies them, okay, your, your property is, could be affected by a petition that's been received. Whether they were a part of the petition or not, we wanna make sure that they know something's going on. That's been a, something that the board has always wanted the planning department to do, because otherwise, you get a bunch of angry people in here saying, how come I wasn't notified of this? And they at least, as a courtesy, get some kind of notice from the board, even if it's not a, a required notice by statute that we have to do, we go to that extra effort in these instances to notify them.
So, you notify different groups of people differently, is what I'm asking.
No, Brian just said he notifies the property owners that are affected by the proposed zoning change. So, you got that letter because you were a property owner that was affected by the proposed Mast Road change.
She got a letter that notified her about the proposed zoning at her property.
But not the abutters? And that's what I understand.
Right, in both cases.
And that was, that was, yeah, consistent in both cases.
Okay. Yeah. Any motions for this one?
Motion.
Oh, we have a motion. We have a motion on the floor.
Who was the motion second? I apologize.
The motion was...
Mark and Phil. Mark was the motion, and Phil was the second?
To recommend.
Right.
Yes. Okay, all in favor of recommending this petition for the ballot, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Seven-zero to recommend. All right, we have a letter...
Mr. Chair, do you wanna start at number one again now?
I'd like to do something here, we have, we have this letter from, huh? Yeah, we should take the order, I know that's number eight. Okay. It's ten thirty?
Yep, ten thirty-three.
All right, so you wanna start at the beginning, or we start, okay, let's start at number one.
Okay.
So, the number one language is, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number one as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board, amending section six point six point one, six point six point two, and six point six point three of the, of the zoning ordinance to allow signs in the industrial zone to be ten percent of the area of the wall to which they are fixed, not to exceed a cumulative maximum sign size of one hundred square feet? And just to make a note, the board has discussed this in a previous public hearing, and I don't believe any changes were made to this, this petition, or this recommended zoning change, I recall.
Now, what's our procedure on these? Are we gonna ask for a public comment first, or we, do we get a motion seconded and then open it up?
It was, it, I think it should be public hearing, then go to deliberation, just as the other ones.
That sounds good, okay.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine.
Go to public comment, then go to discussion, then vote?
It's a public hearing.
Excuse me?
This is a public hearing, yes.
Public hearing.
Yes, let's take this to public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? Okay, we shouldn't close, well, what do we do, close public hearing for each one individual?
Close the discussion, the public discussion on this article amendment.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Close the public discussion on this amendment, so the public hearing is still open.
Public hearing is still open, close the public discussion on this amendment, yes. Discuss it with the board?
All make a motion. Do we, do we have to do this? Is there, okay, direct, do we recommend this?
Second it.
I'm sorry, Gally, I didn't word that very well. I hope, I hope you didn't put me down verbatim. Mark said blah blah, yes.
She always, she always prides us a lot more articulate than we really are.
Yeah, she gets my grammar right and punctuation and everything, regardless of what we said. She gets my grammar right and punctuation and everything, regardless of what we said.
Does it vote? Discussion, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven zero. Number two, Ryan.
Number two, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number two as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 6.13 of the zoning ordinance, temporary signs to change the number of days that temporary signs are permitted for each occasion from 10 days to 30 days, and to change the number of occasions that temporary signs may be permitted for each calendar year from four to three?
Thank you, Brian.
Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation for Mark, second by?
Second.
Second by Chris.
Yeah, we do, we have to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
It's late after. And, yes, public comment, please come.
No, I'm afraid. Check your grammar.
Uh-oh.
Because it says temporary signs are permitted, and then it says temporary signs are permitted for each calendar year from four times to three. But it never says, it says each occasion. It doesn't say per entity. In other words, you can only have four, three temporary signs a year. And count, it doesn't say the entity can have three. Like the Villa Augustina can advertise three times a year with its temporary sign. The Lions Club, Villa, and who knows who can each have one in the year, and that's it, for 30 days.
I don't believe that's the way that we've ever interpreted that.
I know, but.
Okay. We're not changing any of the other language, other than the, the numbers on there?
You ought to correct it to, because you are changing it from four times to three and the days from 10 to 30. So you ought to change the language to reflect what you really mean. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely, that's what we, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input.
Where were you last month, Karen? We could've used you. I'm gonna send these to you in advance from now on.
Right.
I, we believe that.
Thank you.
Change number days, well... Can we amend this at this point? We can't change it at this point.
And the language is pretty much set for this notice. So we can't really change it because of the public notice requirements.
Right, is there being any misunderstanding?
It's either that or pull it.
And I, I mean, I have to, Brian, has that been, we're just sort of changing the times here. Has the interpretation as to entity been an issue up till now?
No.
Because, I mean, we're talking establishments, not lot, we're talking.
I think there's enough other language in the ordinance that specifies that, you know, each property can have a certain number of signs. And then also, this, this language basically says banners and for, banners and other temporary signs for commercial establishments or for a commercial event meant to be, so I mean, for commercial establishments.
Establishment to me is entity. It doesn't mean the lot. It means, it doesn't prevent Planet Fitness from putting a sign out and then.
Right.
Radio Shack from putting a sign out. I mean, I think you need to watch it to see if it's an issue. And occasionally, in the past, we've had articles where some of these interpretation issues. But this has been on the books for a while, so I think you should come to us next year if it has been an issue or if you think we should change it. But I think really what we're changing is the sequence of days, not the who and where.
Yeah. I think, yeah, maybe next year if that's something that.
Comes up.
You know, is a problem or whatever. But as far as I understand, the interpretation has always been, you know, any establishment that wants to come in has the same option to get a temporary sign of 24 square feet and, you know, can have it for X number of days and X number of occasions. So each one of those is the way that it's been interpreted, so. Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
And it's temporary, not permanent signs.
Yeah, is there anyone else from the public that would like to take a vote on that? We have a motion.
Yeah, repeat my motion that we give us a positive recommendation.
Yeah, I'll second.
From Mark, second from Chris. Discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven zero. Number three?
Number three, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number three as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending sections, section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to eliminate the planning board's ability to grant the conditional use permit to have less front setback in the residential two and village commercial districts?
Thank you. Any public, open up the public hearing for this one? You'll close the public hearing for this one? Any comments from the board, motions?
Motion to place on the ballot is recommended.
Motion from Barbara.
Second.
Second from Phil. Discussion, any motion, comments, questions, any, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero. Number four?
Number four, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number four as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 10.3.1 of the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits required for telecommunications facilities to permit applications for co-locations as defined in RSA 12-k colon 2x, Roman numeral X, to not require approval of a conditional use permit or site plan, but to proceed directly to building permit application and review, and to require applications that constitute a substantial modification, quote unquote, as defined in RSA 12-k colon 2, Roman numeral XXV25, to obtain the approval of a conditional use permit and site plan, and to require that the determination of requirements be done with the consideration of all cumulative changes to the tower since its original approval.
Thank you. Open the public hearing for this one? Public comment for this, I'm sorry? No public comment? Close the public comment? Anything from the board?
I move to place this on the ballot as recommended.
Second.
Brian and Phil. Comment, questions, any motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained, seven zero. Number five?
Okay. Number five, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number five as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 3.11, Table H, Table of Principal Uses for Transportation, Communication, and Utilities, and amending section 5 supplemental standards, and amending section 7.2.5, Table I, parking standards, and amending the definition section of the zoning ordinance to allow self-storage facilities as a new principal use in the table of uses to be a permitted use in the industrial and commercial industrial flex zone districts and in the commercial district by conditional use permit, and to also, and also instituting some applicable supplemental standards that self-service storage facilities would have to follow.
Thank you, Brian. Open the public comment on this one? If you please state your name again.
Additional supplemental standard?
Could be on TV now.
Whoopie. What are the additional standards? And who's going to do the instituting?
Do you want me to respond, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Supplemental standards, we would add, it's really one supplemental standard in that the, that is that the minimum lot area on which a self-storage, self-service storage facility is located shall be one acre. The rest are parking standards and a definition for self-service storage facility. That's, if you look on, that's, uh...
This page.
Yeah. Number five in that, in that packet there.
So it's pretty wide open to the discretion of the planning board as to what it is, whether they're one-story or two-story, or they're 20 in a line or 10 in a line or back-to-back double or sizes or anything else that's just open to... So on the one acre, you could put in as many as you could possibly cram in. Two stories high, three stories high, elevated?
As it's currently written, there's no standard that says number of, limited number of units. Obviously, they, they have to base it on how much they can fit on a piece of property, but... And how much, how much would work for a piece of property?
So there are no standards, other than it has to be one acre?
That's the current regulation, right?
And there are no height standards?
There is a current height standard in every zone, so they're limited by height. In the, in the commercial industrial flex zone, I think it's 45 feet. I can tell you in a second. Commercial industrial flex zone has a height limit of 45 feet. And the other zone was commercial, is that right?
Yes.
That one also has a height limit of 45 feet. So they couldn't go higher than probably three stories.
Okay.
Max of, max of four, if you do really short stories.
Right, but it, I mean, in some of that, you'd want it fairly tall to accommodate RVs or, or whatever. But you could go three stories tall, then you'd have to have it elevated.
An elevator, you mean?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure what the rules are.
I, I just think it's, it's very, it's loose. And I think that we have one self-storage entity in town. It's off Daniel Plummer Road in the industrial zone. And it's very well-kept and managed and lit and fenced. And I see none of those kinds of requirements in there. And I think self-storage areas can be a real problem if they're not fenced properly and manned a certain number of hours a day and what have you. And I've just seen such an abuse of storage facilities that, that's why I came here tonight to voice my opinion that I think you have to be really, really careful when you're permitting self-storage facilities, because they are open to a lot of abuse.
Mr. Chair, if I may just make a comment?
Sure.
One of the reasons I, I submitted this as a possible amendment for the planning board to consider is just the fact that I've had multiple people come and question, can I do a self-serve, self-storage unit facility in the town? And as my responsibility as a planning and zoning administrator, it's my job to either tell them it's permitted or it's not permitted, or here's the zone that, you know, you can do it in. And I, I also have the charge of determining if it's something close to something else that we allow in town, then you kind of veer them in that direction and say, okay, you're gonna follow these rules, even though it doesn't specifically say self-storage facility. You know, you're gonna follow these rules. My, in my opinion, it's much easier when there's a clear name on the, on the table that says, here's where a self-service storage facility is allowed. And this is kind of a, a first go at trying to at least have it in there. And, you know, if, I, I think if the board wants to maybe consider amending that, you know, we look at how well it works and, you know, add some more to it next year. I think that was part of the discussion last meeting, anyway, that this was kind of a, you know, let's, let's make this available and allowable, and then we can kind of tweak it as we move along.
I think that's putting the cart before the horse. I think you ought, should have certain parameters in effect beforehand, like fencing and manning and lighting and things like that, before you start permitting self-storage facilities. Because if the first one gets in the door on its acre and then you say, oh, this is a disaster, we've gotta change this and that, but the first one is grandfathered in. You don't go back. So if you're going to permit self-storage facilities, I think for the safety of the people in town, the people using it, you ought to have the fencing requirements, the lighting requirements, all, all of that in place before the permitting. And I think that can change from the size and what have you, but I, I just... I just have seen abuses of self-storage facilities. And the ones that are, are the best are the ones that are gated, fenced, well-lit, and manned certain hours of the day, and then keyed for other hours. But it's, I think it's...
Could you give us an example of abuses that you've seen, that you're concerned about, that would happen?
Yeah, people just ramming the fence, coming in and, and going through, popping the doors open and stealing.
So theft, you're concerned about theft?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I... Sort of more for our discussion.
But I mean, there can be very well-managed storage facilities. And I'm just saying that the ones that are very well-managed have, are following... They're fenced, they're lit, and even at night, they're lit. Or they have the lights that if there's movement, they're camered and the lights go on. It's just, it's just for everybody's safety. Because let's say you were accessing your, your storage facility and somebody saw the, the lights were out or something and decided, oh, I'm gonna climb over the fence and see what I can find. And the lights go on and you're, the, that person is scared away. I mean, it just... I don't know. But I have seen. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And ma'am, I wasn't being rude, I just asked them if you had said your name and your address, and they told me you did.
Some people.
Some people.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I remember when we spoke about this at the meeting and every one of us brought up the identical considerations that she was bringing up. And we all agreed wholeheartedly and felt as though that when the plans come before us, that all the members, this board, other boards, have voted to make sure they're there, that the insurance regulations that are in place from insurance companies for people having these buildings have their own guidelines in place to make sure that they're fenced and theft-proof and all that sort of thing. So I just wanna say that the board has talked about this and we agree wholeheartedly. Because any plan that comes through, we've always discussed to make sure that it is being built properly and not just something put up, and see you later.
I am just excited that this board apparently agreed wholeheartedly on something at some point during the year.
It was, it was rare.
I must've been gone there.
Were you on that meeting, Mark?
Maybe I'm stretching the truth.
Always there for that.
I was there for that.
But we did seem to be in agreement.
I'm like listening, like, when was this?
The only time I've ever seen a wholehearted vote is to adjourn.
Sorry, even a wholeheartedly, but we did all seem to have a similar opinion, maybe I should have said that.
Okay, any other public, any other public comments? No? Okay, we'll close that public comment. Discussion for the board, the motions.
I moved, place on the ballot with positive recommendations.
Motion from Mark, placed on the ballot with positive recommendations, seconded by Chris. Speak to that comment. Speak to the motion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Nay. Abstained? Brian, number six, please.
Number six, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number Six as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board, amending Section 5.1 and the definition section of the zoning ordinance, accessory buildings and facilities, by clarifying in the section language that the rules of this section apply to buildings that have, that have any portion of the building lying within the accessory building setback area, and that the limitations do not apply to buildings that meet the underlying setback and also by, and by defining yard in the
I want to open the public comment to that. Yes, sir?
My name is Wayne Peralt, living on 14th Frank Street in Goffstown. This one is really confusing to me, please bear with me.
Mr. Peralt, am I correct in that you also addressed this a little bit in your email that you sent out with the PDF files?
Yes.
Just so...
Yes, I did.
Because it's sort of halfway through the front page, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew.
And is this copy, the final copy, that, as far as wording, or can it still be, the wording still be changed? Like on this one?
The wording, no, I don't think the wording can be changed at this point.
And there's not much I can say, other than changing the word "structures," as in my email I had discussed about the buildings. From my experience, past couple of years, that can be interpreted in a number of different ways by a number of different sides, by different sides, and boards, committees, judges. So, and this could have effects all the way through the zoning ordinance, because people may take this and use it with something else and say, this is the more restrictive. So it's, it's just something that I had gone through, that I've seen, that when you change a word from "structures" to "buildings," now it's "buildings." Buildings was included in "structures," and now it's very specific, and that becomes a more restrictive, um, which would apply, and I can't imagine what other type of situations, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I don't know if that, if I made sense or not, but it's, I'm running on fumes right now. We all are. And I had a long day at the dentist, and, um, that's, I guess that's all I have to say about this one, and I'll speak to the next one when it comes up.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any more public comment on this? We'll, we'll close the public comment. Folks, I'm, just want to mention that I'm looking at the definition of, of buildings. This category is for building, buildings and non-building structures. I thought we had discussed last time, I thought we had said that, I don't know why I thought we said that they were the same. But I'm looking at the definition and...
In the zoning ordinance, or?
Well, when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, I, I thought that question came up.
It did.
The difference between buildings and structures.
Yeah.
Right, we talked about a generator house.
They're not synonymous, correct? They are, they're not synonymous. They are, or, uh, I thought we determined that they were, I thought we said they were, maybe I...
Structures includes...
Is a structure a building? Is any building a structure?
Things such as signs and billboards and manufactured homes and buildings. Buildings is a portion of structures.
Buildings is more restrictive.
Buildings is more restrictive.
Well, because I think, I thought that what we were talking about is that structures could have made...
Accessory structures, accessory buildings, I guess.
Accessory buildings.
Right, that structure could have been anything, which was not appropriate. But again, I might be, I have fumes just going right now, too.
Yeah, we're all running on fumes, and that's always, uh...
I mean, try and help me out here.
The definition of...
We did the night before.
The definition of building then says any structure have, so it, it somewhat goes back and forth. Any structure having a roof and intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animal, or chattel. The word "building" includes the word "structure." So there, we saw in the previous definition, "structure" included the word "building." Well, here, this, this says the word "building" includes the word "structure." So, I don't know. I, I tend to use them synonymously. Um, I don't know.
And what's a facility, then?
A facility?
You have accessory buildings and facilities.
I'm not sure what would fall into that category.
Also, in the last line of this, says, "meet the underlying setback and by defining yard" in the definitions section. So are we in favor, I mean, the question asks if you're in favor of clarifying the language and by defining yard in the definitions section, but it doesn't continue to define yard?
Yard is defined in the more, in the full text version, if you have that in front of you as well.
It's the, it's the same thing as the one we just did, because the one we just did actually only notices some applicable supplemental standards that would, they would have to follow, and if you looked at the redline copy, they were in it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I got you, I see it now. Thank you.
Just to make that clear, a facility is a space necessary for doing something. Excuse me. Public can't get close. Public can't get close. Any motions on this, any?
I'll make a motion to put it on as recommended. Well, to put it on the ballot, if it goes on the ballot.
Second that motion.
I understand the issue with the definition, because we sort of started this discussion the same way, I think, when we had it before, and I'll admit that at this hour, I'm not really thinking clearly, and I think the point was to try and just get consistent. And I actually do view this as a change that is less restrictive than what we could possibly be argued now, but it's all in the wordsmithing, and I think as the person who spoke in public comment, he gave us some material that indicates people interpret words differently, and we try to do the best we can, and I think we see how this goes, but I think that was the intent, was to try and make it clear as to the building structure language.
Yeah, motion to, uh...
Barbara, I'll second it.
So we have a motion from Barbara, seconded by Phil, to recommend the ballot.
See, I read the minutes that we had, and I agree with Barbara on what I just went through, the minutes that we had.
Okay. Any comments, questions, take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero. Number seven, Brian?
Hey, John?
Yes.
I know we're not the most formal of bodies, the way we operate, but don't our rules say that we're done at 11 o'clock?
Motion to extend.
Right, unless we move to keep it going on.
I'll make a motion to extend the time.
Second it.
To accommodate the public here.
And the school is okay?
We're here.
We're here, right, and they're not, so...
We have possession of the room.
Okay.
Is that covered in our ordinance? I'm kidding.
Okay. Yeah, the happy floor, bell rings.
We need to get out of here before they come in.
Yeah, the bell rings at what time in the morning?
Right, okay, let's keep going.
Number seven.
Number seven. Take a vote, I guess.
That was seven zero zero.
Seven zero zero, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Be twice as fast, everybody.
Okay, number seven, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number Seven as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board, amending Section 5.2.1 of the, of the zoning ordinance by increasing the maximum allowable size for accessory dwelling units from 650 square feet to 800 square feet?
Thank you, Brian. Open that for public hearing, public comment, I'm sorry. Anybody want to comment on that one? We'll close the public comment. Any action from the board?
Motion to place on the ballot.
Second.
Motion to place on the ballot. Chris, seconded by Chris. Speak to that motion. Comments, questions, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero.
Sorry, tell me one more time who is the motion and second? Okay. Number eight. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number Eight as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board, amending Section 3.12 of the zoning ordinance, Table of Accessory Uses, to allow accessory dwelling units to be considered a permitted use with no need to obtain a special exception, notwithstanding the fact that it is listed as a use permitted by special exception, if the lot is of a size that it meets or exceeds the buildable acreage requirement in Section 4.3, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a duplex to be built on the lot?
Thank you, Brian. Number eight, public comment on this one? Yes, sir?
Wayne Peralt, 14th Frank Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire. I've made this a little easier for us. I have copies of what I'm going to read, working with the board.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, we'll just pass it around.
Mr. Peralt, would you rather we read this real quick, or would you rather speak first?
I would just like, I have a couple of questions.
He's going to read it.
A couple of questions.
Who's going to read it?
I'm going to try.
Yeah, okay.
If somebody wants to read it.
No, go ahead. It's yours.
Is this going on the ballot now as it's written, or can it be pulled, or it cannot be amended, that's what I just found out, not, but can it be pulled tonight?
No, it could be recommended.
Or is it proposed as recommended and not recommended? If not recommended by the board tonight, then we would just pull it, and we would not put it as a, as a, as a warrant article. Okay, so if it's not...
The petition warrant articles have to go on, that's why we did the whole "not" thing, but these would just be, disappear.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for giving me this opportunity to speak on this issue. I hope you all received my email from Patty Gale forwarded to you on Monday. The driveway issue I used is a good example of an unexpected consequence that has had a very negative effect on my health. I will most probably be back on dialysis and be on the kidney transplant waiting list at some point in my life. It has created excessive nuisance noise and reduced my property value as it is directly across from my bedroom. It was used as a park and ride for the owner's construction business for a while in 2011, and is, by zoning ordinance definition, off-street parking. I am in a residentially, residential one-zone district. The driveway issue is something I used just as an example. The existing requirement for a conditional use permit in that example was changed by Brian's interpretation, as you can see in the PDF of emails I sent you. Regarding Amendment Eight, without a conditional use permit, a neighbor will be able to add on in addition to create a duplex and to build it to look any way he wants, and could affect his neighbors in many negative ways. Up to eight abutters could be affected. A conditional use permit protects against buildings that have adversely, that adversely affects the character of a neighborhood, the value of property, and, with emphasis here, and the health and general welfare of all residents. In my issue with my neighbor, had he come before the planning board, as everyone had originally agreed, including Brian Rose, on August 20th, 2010, it would have been resolved if it complied with the zoning ordinance. When he wants to build a duplex, I'm referring to my neighbor, I will work with the planning board to make sure I am protected and he does not, and he does get to add on to, to make a duplex that does follow the zoning ordinance and planning regs. Once a simple permit is issued to anyone, we have no idea if that person will stay within compliance. A conditional use permit ensures that it will be. We all want the right to do what we want with our own property. As it, as the zoning ordinance is now, it protects abutters and property owners, see Purpose Section of the ZO 1.3.1 and 1.3.7. A conditional use permit protects the right to try and resolve issues at the planning board level. It encourages communication, that is why it works now. So I'm asking you to remove Amendment Eight from being put on the warrant article. I could go on, I'll answer any questions I can. My issues, my issue is still pending in the appeals process. This change could end up circumventing the final ruling of a New Hampshire Supreme Court. By law, there are some things I cannot discuss or comment on. And the last line, I guess you're going to vote on that tonight, so I don't need to be... So my concern is, and I, I guess I would like to ask Brian Rose one question, is what precipitated this proposal? Is it one, one, one incident? Or are there a number of incidents? And then the following question is, will this make it easier for my neighbor across the street to put in a duplex without a conditional use permit? I guess that's... Okay, answer, Mr. Check?
Thank you, absolutely, answer.
The, the, the subject of this amendment is to allow accessory dwelling units to be a permitted use by, by right in certain instances, not in all instances. And so it, it actually isn't speaking to the issue of creating duplexes. It's, it's a bit smaller than the duplex, I guess. It's somewhat similar to that, but it's a, it's considered in our ordinance as a single-family house with an attached accessory dwelling unit, which those, if, I mean, we were discussing in a previous article number, or amendment number, that the...
in a previous article number or amendment number that the allowable square footage could be 800 square feet if approved by the voters in March. Currently, the rule is 650 square feet. So, that being said, it wouldn't allow them to do a duplex on their lot by approving The second thing is, their lot size across from your house would also prohibit them from being able to fit under this category anyway because in the zoning ordinance, what it states in the language here is it would be allowed if the lot is of a size that it meets or exceeds the buildable acreage requirement in section 4.3 to allow a duplex to be built on the lot. So it has to meet the same size acreage requirement as what a duplex would be required to meet. And that duplex requirement, or the acreage for a duplex in our ordinance is, notwithstanding maximum density, a two-family dwelling is allowed if the lot has both three acres and 300 feet of frontage. So that's a fairly sizable lot that you have to have in frontage as well, which I don't believe they have that size.
No, they don't. They don't have that. And were there, is there a certain issue that precipitated this change?
The issue with single-family homes, especially in the agricultural area, we have a lot of agricultural land, some people live on very large lots and they want to build an accessory apartment for an in-law or something like that. And in all cases in the town, if you want to do that, you have to come and get a special exception. There's no breaks on, you know, what zoning district you're in, you always have to come for a special exception. So I tried to say, and we do get a lot of requests for this, and so I tried to say to the board, couldn't we create a scenario where if they've got a large lot and it's not going to hopefully bother anybody, let's let them have the, as a permitted right to do that. And that's the goal of this change.
Is a special exception the same thing as a conditional use permit?
No, it's not. Special exception goes through the zoning board of adjustment. Conditional use permit is something that goes through the planning board. So they're two different animals. They have different criteria that they would be required to meet, and so it's, yeah, apples and oranges.
I would, thank you for your answer and for the clarification. I would still, I still have concerns on this because it includes residential areas, especially residential one, but you know, you get into one, you get into two, then residential business. And I think that this can have, you know, unforeseen consequences down the road. As you, in my letter, I explained and I showed pictures, those pictures were taken from my house, from my bedroom, and as I said, I just, I guess I would ask the board if you could vote not to put this on the ballot this year and just give it a little, have more input or reword it to eliminate residential areas. I was prepared to ask tonight that I would only be, I would be satisfied and I would feel better if residential areas were taken out of this. And if there's no pending issue on any one property, then I don't see why it would be something that couldn't wait until next year. And so I am basically going back to what I heard earlier with another person who had wanted to do something and there's no pending exactly what he wanted to do. So I would hope that the board could reconsider voting for this to go on the ballot and to recommend that it does not, so that it does not show up on the warrant article, and make the corrections or at least discuss and see if you could live with taking out the residential areas. As a lot of you know, I've been an activist for what I think is best for the town, like everybody has their own opinion, and I'm very protective of residents, my property, and this, as it's changed, I believe, and discussions I've had, that it would make it easier for my neighbor. And because of the pending Supreme Court ruling, which has been delayed because the town has asked for an extension for some reason, I think it was just the attorney's conflict, it's late, and I just, I would feel more comfortable tonight and be able to sleep if I just knew that this was put off until next year and then that the residential areas were taken into consideration. Even though what he said, what Brian said, again, Brian interprets things one way, I interpret it, and the process I've been through just is unthinkable of how many different ways one thing can be interpreted. So I'm asking if you could please vote to remove this from the ballot, to not recommend it, and to remove it from the ballot this year, and then give it for the consideration next year? And I thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions to the best I can, that I can, if anybody has any.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? We'll close the public comment on that one. Do we have any motions or discussions by the board? I think if I had to make a comment at all, we have an applicant here who is obviously has some serious issues with this and feels that it will affect him and his property. And I think that's all I need to hear, to ask the board to make a motion not to recommend this. We can always bring it back next year, we can always fix it, we can always do something.
Didn't you just vote for an article that the same member of the public didn't want us to?
Point of order. That was the last one. That was another one, that wasn't this one. So I'm recommending, I would recommend, and I'm going to support voting to not recommend this, only because there is a member of the public that took the time to come here and speak on it, obviously has a serious issue with it, and if it affects him, it's nothing that can't be fixed over the next year and brought forth again on another ballot. It's only a year away. That's all I have to say on that one.
Just a response, I don't know that there's a motion.
We're discussing.
I thought we just clarified by virtue of the discussion during the public hearing that it did not affect the person speaking, it would not have impacted the lot across from him, and there are no lots on Spring Street. I shouldn't say, that's like saying never, I should probably not say that, but are there any lots on Spring Street that are three acres?
I don't believe so, but I don't know the answer. I couldn't verify that.
I think the biggest lot in that area is that lot on the corner of Maple Street that has frontage on the other, that goes around the corner. I don't think there's anything in that area. I thought the point of this was, it's really not changing what's in our chart, it's just adding the option that if somebody has three acres, they don't need to go to the zoning board, right? I mean, that's essentially what this is doing, right? If they have three acres, they don't have to go to the zoning board to get a permit. They still have to meet building requirements, setback requirements, all of the other things to do this. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Phil.
In the agricultural zone, it requires three acres for a duplex, is that correct?
Correct.
If I have three acres and I'm in the ag zone, I can just go call a building permit for a duplex?
Correct. Well, let me, I want to clarify, I'm sorry, I should have clarified this earlier when I was talking. There's two areas that talk about density for duplexes. There's the area in the table where it says maximum number of dwelling units per buildable acre in the duplex, for duplex and multifamily lots. So there's a different requirement for, in that table, for duplexes, and the rule basically is two dwelling units per buildable acre. So there's a difference between acres and buildable acres that you can get in the residential one and, well, I'm sorry, depends on how many, depends on if you have water and sewer. If you have one or the other, you get two dwelling units per buildable acre. If you have, if you have both, then you get six dwelling units per buildable acre, and if you don't have any of them, then you get one. In the agricultural zone, it's .8 dwelling units per acre. So you've got to have more than two acres, two buildable acres in order to get, I think it's like two and a half buildable acres in order to get a duplex on a lot in the agricultural zone. Now, and it goes on and on down below for all the different zonings. Now, down below, it says, notwithstanding maximum density, so that's the maximum density we're talking about above. If you have three acres and 300 feet of frontage, you can do it. If the lot has that calculation, two-family dwelling is allowed, and that's in the agricultural zone only. So the other, let me just look at the residential two. In the residential two zone, you have to have water and sewer, and you could get eight dwelling units per buildable acre. So you'd have to have a quarter of an acre in order to get two dwelling units, and that's per buildable acre.
Everybody catch all that? There's going to be a quiz.
Do we have a motion? Do we have any, anybody want to take action on this?
I just have a quick question. I just want to confirm that the gentleman's neighbor will not be able to turn his house into a duplex and expand without going through a conditional use permit that he wants so it can be done properly because his lot is too small in accordance with this. Is that correct?
It's a special exception.
Right, but basically the neighbor would have his input on it, that the, this gentleman will have his input on it like he wants if the other neighbor wants to do something because his lot is too small.
Either way, a duplex is not what we're talking about anyway. We're talking about an accessory dwelling unit.
Right. And I know, and it's two different things, we're not talking about building, we're not talking about building something. So in all cases, this gentleman isn't going to get a surprise by his neighbor that he doesn't want, isn't fear of.
Well...
Unless it's done, you know, completely illegally by the statutes, that can't be done, right?
I mean...
You can be sure of that.
Going back and looking at the acreage requirement and what's in the R2, I don't know what the size of their lot calculation is. I'd have to do a calculation.
Okay.
However, I can assuredly say a duplex would not fall under this change, so this change would not allow a duplex to go in.
Okay.
This only allows 700, is it, what, 750?
650 right now. If the other change goes through, then it would be 800.
800, so you're increasing the allowable square footage by 150 square foot. That, and the fact that you don't need the special exception, that's the only difference.
Okay.
I move that we place this on the ballot as recommended.
Second.
Motion from Brian, second from Barbara. Want to speak to that motion?
No.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Two no's.
Two no's? John and Donna. Five two. Okay, Brian, number nine.
Okay. Number nine, are you in favor of adoption of amendment nine as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 3.12 and section 5.5.2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the keeping of poultry as permitted accessory uses in the residential one and residential two districts, and that the keeping of livestock and poultry in the town would be subject to applicable supplemental standards under section 5.5.2 that limit these uses on non-conforming lots or on lots smaller than two acres in size?
Thank you, Brian. Any public, any public comments on this one? I don't see any. We'll close the public comment.
Motion to place on the ballot as recommended.
Second.
Motion from Barbara, second from Brian. Any comments? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero. Okay. Number 10, Brian?
Number 10. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number 10 as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 6.2.1 of the zoning ordinance, sign measurement to change the way that awning signs are measured by making them measured in the same way as wall signs by eliminating the phrase, quote, "Except that if the awning is lighted, the entire awning shall be considered signage measured by the amount of wall area that is covered by the entire awning," close quote.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comment on this one? Close the public comment. Any action by the board?
I move to put it on the ballot as recommended.
Second.
Motion from Mark, second from Phil. Speak to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero. Number 11? 11, yes.
Yep. 11, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number 11 as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 14.7.3 of the zoning ordinance, use of a non-conforming lot to remove two conditions necessary to be met by applicants in order to apply for a special exception to develop a non-conforming lot by eliminating in their entirety the two subsections 14.7.3.2 and 14.7.3.4 that require adjacent lots to have been held under separate ownership since 1961 and that require lots to be consolidated as necessary to eliminate nonconformity if under the same ownership.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comment on that one? I don't see any. Close the public comment. Any motions?
I move that we place it on the ballot and recommend it.
Second.
Motion from Mark, second from Barbara. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Number 12.
Number 12, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number 12 as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board amending section 6.6 and 6.7? Board, amending section 6.6 and 6.7 and 3.12 of the zoning ordinance to allow home occupations in existing residences within the industrial zone and also to allow home occupation signs to be erected for existing residences in the commercial, industrial, commercial industrial flex zone, residential small business office and village commercial districts by inserting a subsection into section 6.6 and section 6.7 that allows one sign of up to two square feet in area for an approved home occupation, see section 5.12.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comment on this one? Not seeing any. Close the public comment. Any action from the board?
Motion to place on the ballot, recommended.
Second.
Motion from Barbara, second from Phil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven zero. Number 13.
Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number 13 as proposed by the Goffstown Planning Board, amending the Goffstown zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of properties identified as tax map six lots 1-2, 1-3, 1-4, 1-6, 1-6-1, and 1-6-2 from the industrial district to the commercial industrial flex zone district?
Thank you. Any public comment on this one? That's the last one. We're going to close the public comment. Any action from the board?
Can you remind me where this one is? Is this the one on back Goffstown Road?
Yes.
Goffstown back road.
Where the lines are or something?
Where the towers are.
Right.
The towers.
The towers.
Towers, right.
And where the owner never came in.
Right.
But he did want it changed through the conduit, we were told.
Yeah.
So no verification directly.
So here, we're going to change the zoning of a piece of property.
Without the owner.
Without the owner, without the owner telling us that he wants to. Think I've heard that before. But I want to suggest that we don't, we don't do that. We don't want to change properties. We don't want the owner of that, Mr. Silverberg waking up tomorrow with his property zone as something else.
Question for Brian. Were these lot map and lot numbers notified by letter of the zoning change on the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
And another question from Brian. I mean, did the owner come to you before this? I'm getting the first feeling now that this might be a shady thing, that someone acted on behalf of the owner to change this without them knowing. I was under the impression that it was legitimate. And I know we don't know.
This came from the Economic Development Council that had meetings and had supposedly talked to the owner and had come forward and...
That's why I'm having the feeling.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Yeah, that's where it came from.
Yes. He really wants it done.
Yeah.
And...
It's too late to remember anything.
There's six, and I'll defer to you if you want to comment.
No, I was just going to say what Barbara just said, that the owner of the property spoke with the chairman of the Economic Development Committee and he confirmed that this is what the owner wanted.
Yes.
But that was before us and then you sent out the notices, though. Yeah, okay.
There are six lots identified here. Are they all owned by the same person or entity?
Yes.
No.
I, I'm not sure.
No, they aren't. The antennas are owned by someone else, is what the owner told me a few years ago.
These are the lots around?
Yeah, these are the lots around the antennas.
These are the least, these are the lots around the antennas?
Yes. When you drive down that cul-de-sac, these are the lots off the cul-de-sac, not inside.
I'm not really sure if there's a partnership or...
I remember seeing a whole plan on this and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, looking at those back lots at one time.
Yeah. But I mean, when it came before the Economic Development Council to get this changed, that's what I'm saying, that I remember looking at that plan.
And I have another question for you about these zoning designations, because I don't remember all of the definitions. If, with the flex zone district, would they allow housing, multi-housing any different than in the commercial zone? Or is it allowed in both, both zoning types? Because I know a lot of people are worried about apartments and workforce housing, right? We hear a lot about that. Would those, would workforce housing be allowed in either of these zoning designations?
Well, the current zoning district is industrial and it's not allowed in that district.
But it would be in our...
CIFZ, under a mixed-use project, it could be allowed by conditional use permit. So it still would have to come through a board. It'd have to be granted a conditional use permit in order to be able to do it.
And in addition to that, the, one of the issues with these particular lots is that there's a lot of underground wires and cables and wetlands there. So even though it is permitted, the all likelihood between the demand of it and it actually being feasible for a multi-story structure to be built on any one of these lots or a combination of lots is pretty slim due to the wetlands and the underground cables and stuff, wires on some of these lots.
Well, I think part of the issue in the application wasn't it, was that the property owners are trying to get some use out of their property.
Exactly.
Which apparently, which as an industrial zone, there are options for development. I think it's fair to say that under industrial zone, your options for the type of development you can do are less than in the, than in the flex zone as proposed.
That's exactly what it is.
And, you know, there are issues with the property itself. I mean, you'd never guess there's that much water on that side until you go on it, which was part of the whole plan to begin with. But, and with the issue of the access on the back road, you know, I think that was the point of this, was to try to get use out of the property.
Because it's been trying to be marketed as industrial, what it's zone right now. And that's been what the issue was.
And he's having no lock in this.
And as a commercial use, it's the time of, of the trucks and the access to the property. And the request of this is to change it so that we can get some tax revenue out of it. Because being zoned as industrial, it's, it's not generating income.
Let me ask you something. Go ahead, Brian.
And to be clear, when we're talking about access, one of the, one of the issues that hamstrung this project was, was the access road from Manchester. Where they made a truck, a truck restriction, basically in response to the availability of the property. So that precipitated this and that's kind of why we're here.
And the Board of Selectment has contacted the city of Manchester and they are, they have no desire to address, to address a change.
Right.
It still bothers me that the owner didn't come in. So, I mean, there you get all of this hearsay of, yep, the owner wants it. Yep, the owner wants it. Except that we have no written affidavit from the owner saying, yes, I want it. We just have a lot of people talking to the owner who have talked to the owner, but the owner didn't come in and talk to us.
Well, I would just say that the people who have talked to the owner are members of Economic Development, number one, as we have a representative here from this ward who is on Economic Development.
That doesn't carry much weight.
Economic Development is an advisory committee. What is economic development, economic development as...
It's an advisory committee to the Board of Selectment.
And where, and the planning board is an elected board?
Correct.
Right.
Did you hear from the guy?
If I owned that property, I think I'd want to talk to the planning board.
Not personally, no.
I think I would definitely want to make sure the planning board understands my intentions if I was the owner of that property.
Well, on the other hand, I mean, I understand how you're all interpreting it, but you can also interpret that, you know, what's the rule? Silence is acceptance? They talked to the EDC, Jason Horn was here talking about it, you know, a letter got sent to him in regards to the zoning change. We're not hearing anything from him. I mean, I have to say to a certain extent, because, you know, I think the owner has got a lot of different property interests. I suspect he's saying, okay, change it. Maybe something will happen. And I, we also heard from somebody at a previous hearing who was representing an owner of one of the lots, who, remember, he just wanted to know what we were doing because it depend, he was going to do his application, which I understand is in anyways, right, Brian? Yeah. Okay. So I, I appreciate Donna's comment about not having anybody here, but given the history of this lot and how this came before us, I have to say I'm okay with it. If it was a petition to article by someone who lived across the street, I might have a different opinion on it.
Let me clarify that there was an application that came in for a variance for that property in order to get them a certain step, but they haven't submitted an engineered site plan yet.
No, I understand that, but he made his choice as to what he was going to do and submitted it.
I think one day we're going to wake up and we're going to see something of an adverse use for the benefit of Goffstown on that property. And we'll look back and say, we were told that wasn't going to happen. We're ready to make a motion on this? Who do you want to keep this?
I motion to approve the article as it's written. Second.
Motion by Chris, second by, that was really close, second by Phil. That was, I'm not sure which one was first.
I repeal my second.
Okay, thank you.
You're not seeking the glory of that second for the permanent record?
To recommend the zoning change. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. John and Donna, nay. Five two.
Do we have any other business? I hope not.
I think we can close the public comment.
Well, just remember, the motion that I made was only to accommodate the public comment.
Not out of some sadistic wish to keep us here late, right?